Good afternoon, it's 1:33. Today is Tuesday, the 24th of March, 2020. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We are in work session this afternoon. We have two items for work session. Before we get started, I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask staff to spread out a little bit more and to fill these seats over here, please. And even if it requires you to move the seats, I think there's some uncomfort among, among the council as to how close people are right now. Let's pull them over here by the door, wherever it takes, but I think we want, I think there's desire to make sure we're fully, fully socially distanced. We'll talk about this tonight at our meeting also, but it's our intent, based upon what we know today, it's our intent, three weeks from today when we meet again, to hold that meeting virtually. And you notice that there are a number of cities that are making that move. Our reluctance in doing that today is, we couldn't safely answer the question whether or not we could ensure the public's involvement in the meeting. And I think our, our focus on Open Meetings Act and the fact that our meetings should be open and transparent led us to that, that decision. That's a decision that Mr. Atkinson and I began talking about mid-week last week. It's not something we woke up yesterday morning and started thinking about, and that's where we ended up, where the, where the decision was made. So I guess if anybody's accountable for that, it's probably me. We have two items to discuss in, in work session. We'll get an update on the coronavirus in a number of, from a number of perspectives. First of all, we'll update the most recent disaster declaration and our guidance to that, which has just been published, which I think is a much easier to understand document that we'll be going through, pardon me, pardon me, we'll be going through that publicly, and all of you have a copy of that in front of you. We'll also, I've also asked Mr. Atkinson to talk about the things we're doing operationally and financially to account for these, this crisis, both today, next month, and I think relatively importantly in our planning for, for next year. Following that, we have a brief presentation on performance metric dashboards. This is something that we've been, Mr. Atkinson and I have been talking about, we've been sort of working on for a period of time. This is something that we want to put on our website, and we want you, we want everybody to have a chance to look at it first and get feedback on this. It's a, would allow us to better represent to our citizens how we're doing, sort of those KPIs, key performance indicators, that you might want to know, the ones that we're following that help us understand our business, how we're, how close we are, how well we're meeting our goals, and certainly data that we think would be interesting to our citizens. So with no further ado, we'll move to item 2-1, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, excuse me. I do believe we have public comment today, and should be two of those.
You're right, I'm sorry. So we'll have public comment as, citizen comments, as according to our, my apologies on that, they're right here in front of me, it's no. According to council rules, any citizen that wishes to appear before a meeting of the city council regarding item 2-1 today on our work session agenda, because as you know, we'll be considering this again tonight. They can complete the sign-up form at our meeting no later than 1:30 PM, and we'll give them three minutes to make their points. I'll remind the citizens that it's a one-way conversation for them to share their input with us, that we won't engage in back and forth, that we will have time to deliberate that after we end citizen comments. So I'll invite first Raymond Rios to come forward. Mr. Rios, if you would read your name and address into the, yes, sir, if you'd read your name and address into the record, I would appreciate it. Make sure the green light is on on the speaker. There you go, thank you very much. Good evening, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Raymond Rios, 1104 42nd Street, 79412 here in Lubbock, Texas. Currently, there are 11 cases in Lubbock, and studies from China have indicated that for every one confirmed case of COVID-19, 47 go undetected. That means there are currently over 500 people in Lubbock who have COVID-19. There's another study that states that one-third of all cases are asymptomatic, which means they show no symptoms at all, but they can transmit the virus all the same. One-third of those 500 people, and we expect that to, you know, increase throughout the week, one-third of 500 is 165 people. There's 165 people in Lubbock today that have COVID-19, but are not showing any symptoms, and they never will. Those citizens are cooking-to-go food in our restaurants and our fast-food chains. They are handling money in our banks. They are stocking groceries at our stores. They are separating and delivering mail at the post office. They are treating the sick in our hospitals. Those people that are working on the front lines at these essential businesses need to be the first ones tested and given hazard pay as well. All grocery stores need to be phone orders or online orders only, they can deliver or have curbside pickup. No one needs to be in the grocery stores besides the tested workers. No one should be in the lobbies of banks except by appointment only. All mortgages, rent, car payments need to be canceled for those citizens that have lost their jobs or businesses that have been required to close, at least for the foreseeable future. Utility payments need to be canceled for affected citizens and businesses. Cable, internet, cellular payments need to be canceled for those same people. We have been doing good, but have been behind the curve of what needs to be done to protect the citizens of Lubbock. We need a shelter-in-place order effective yesterday, not when things start getting out of control, by then it is too late. It's time, it's time to start being proactive for the best interest of our city and our citizens. Our national government has failed us, our state government has failed us, please do not let our local government fail at handling this disaster. Step up to the plate and battle for the citizens of Lubbock, be the leaders that we need in these times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Next, we have Veronica Mora. She's a small business owner, she's here to speak to us also on item 2-1.
First of all, let me apologize for my less-than-professional appearance, I was not expecting to do this today. I am a small business owner, I employ 10 people. I own a tattoo shop here in downtown Lubbock. My employees are paid through paycheck, and we report all of their income to the IRS. Since COVID-19 has been announced, we have implemented stringent screening and preventative measures on top of our already strict state and local health department requirements. We have increased our procedures even further than essential businesses who are allowed to remain open, including going to appointment-only, screening questions for our customers, six-foot distancing between customers, wearing gloves and masks, and changing them frequently. Our employees' average take-home pay is about $1,000 a week. We are now facing an inability to pay shop expenses, such as rent and utilities, to continue to provide them a place to work. We should not be grouped in the same, in the same group as hair salons, nail salons, barber shops, and other non-essentials. We, we understand that other cities have mandated this closure, but we believe that we are a professional service and can operate safely in difficult times such as these. We are all, all of the employees at my shop are trained in sterilization and cross-contamination. We have implemented, you know, like I said, further, guidelines, I just lost all my words, I wasn't prepared for this, I apologize, further procedures to make sure that not only our employees, but our customers are safe. We feel that our business is a lot safer than going to an essential business, such as a grocery store. Basically, you know, businesses across the country are allowed to stay open because they are following these safety procedures, and we only want that same opportunity. I, you know, I have the weight of 10 employees on my shoulders and their families, and I don't know how they're going to survive with no income, especially no income after, you know, everything, I guess that's my time?
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Oh, okay. After everything is lifted and they don't have a place to go back to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mora. Okay, I believe, I believe, Bob, that concludes citizen comments, is that correct? Thank you. Okay, we'll go now to item 2-1, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. We sure appreciate everybody being here today. As you know, things have moved quite quickly since your meeting of last Tuesday. This is the first chance the council has had an opportunity as a whole to really get caught up on where we are, what we're doing. So we're going to work our way through that today. I'd like to begin with the two-page handout that was distributed to each of you a moment This is a guidance document that reflects largely the changed content that was in last night's declaration issued by the mayor, but it also builds upon the prior declarations that they were issued. So to go back just a little bit in time, recall, two weeks ago, the mayor, and then immediately thereafter, the council issued their declaration. At the time, that was a commitment to come back to your April the 14th meeting to review. That was also at a limit that's much larger than where we stand today. The mayor, under his authority, issued a second declaration, pulled the number down. Third declaration, which was to match Governor Abbott's executive order, was then issued as well. So that carried us up through last Friday, and then last night, update number four. So if you'll walk through, walk through with me, here's where we stand on the current state of such declarations. Where we are right now goes into effect today, March the 24th at 6:00 PM, and would continue until April the 3rd at 11:59 PM, unless such is canceled or unless such is extended. That is at the authority of the council. So you do have an item on your agenda tonight to consider wrapping up 2, 3, and 4, and reissuing as a council. We will also recommend to you some slight modifications that will come forth for the meeting tonight, but those modifications actually reflect what is in this guidance document. So we attempted to be more clear last night, we're continuing to try to be more clear, and that's just really in response to what we're hearing from our community, from our residents and from our building, our business owners. So key point, city of Lubbock is not under a shelter-in-place or a stay-home order at this point. The steps that were taken last night and the guidance that's here today, they are tight, there is no doubt, they are tight. They are not a shelter-in-place, they are not a stay-at-home order. You likely have seen, really beginning Sunday evening, how things moved very quickly. The initial was Dallas County, we've seen it now trip out through Waco, Collin County, several others. Most are issuing some version of a shelter-in-place order. Would encourage you, and we're keep, trying to keep up with them, but we'll be glad to visit with you about what all those orders do and do not really do. We now have two counties that in lieu of a shelter-in-place have issued curfew orders, one of which is pretty interesting in that for the over-18 population, it's a nighttime curfew. For the 18 and under population, it's a 24-hour curfew. Would suggest to you that those are actually much more tight, much more stringent than any of the shelter-in-place orders that are out there. So Lubbock is not at that point at this time. We are putting foremost in front of everybody's mind that it's up to everybody, it's our residents, our employers, our employees, to protect yourselves, protect the public at large, our businesses and our employers. We do encourage remote, we do encourage work from home where that's possible, as well as social distancing. So we've broken this now for discussion into the following. That first bold, excuse me, that first bolded bullet point, essential services that will remain open and must enforce social distancing to the maximum extent possible. That is also a phrase that you'll find in the federal guidance, CISA, and that document is also at your place today to refer to. So essential services include, but they're not limited to, grocery convenience and package stores, pharmacy and drugs, daycare, healthcare providers and healthcare facilities, pet food, and veterinary care, vehicle fueling, parts, repair, and maintenance. So one of the most critical industries that is functioning today, and really probably second only to what's going on in the medical community, is the transportation, transportation network. Everything it takes to keep your transportation and your logistical networks functioning in the United States are referenced as and recommended to be critical infrastructure. They're an essential service that has to keep going, and that includes all of the various parts that go to that. Homeless shelters and nonprofit providers of essential services. We did have an amended declaration when the numbers came down to 50 that did add in the homeless shelters. You have two shelters that have a capability beyond that 50. Obviously, as the number has come down, the need still remains for those homeless shelters to be able to be open and to function. They have been and continue to be in direct contact with your Department of Public Health, and we'll keep doing that. Essential government services and facilities, banks, financial, and professional services, office buildings, your transportation network as it relates to transit and airport, residential buildings in Lubbock, that's predominantly going to be apartments, hotels and motels, those are open, but their group meeting spaces, if they have them, are not. Okay? So the residential component remains, congregate areas do not. Manufacturing, distributing, and logistics, residential, commercial, and industrial construction, the jobs, the job sites, and the supply chains. There are now stated occupancy limits on those supply chains. Those limits are not more than 100 persons or one-half of the stated occupancy, whichever is less, whichever is less. That goes into effect today at 6:00 PM. Launder mats, dry cleaners, and call centers. Explicitly stated, there are more to the list, but these are your big ones that are essential services to stay open. If you'll turn the page, and I do not know why the staple is in the bottom corner, my apologies, but that's where it's ended up today. There is no change to the closures for restaurants, bars, and food courts, nor to gyms, massage parlors, or the like. They remain closed. But as it relates to the food service, drive-through, pickup, and delivery options are allowed and encouraged. They're allowed and they're encouraged. One of the new ads from yesterday are those personal service businesses. We have a bit of a definition there, but probably easier to say this includes but is not limited to, hair and nail salons, barber shops and stylist shops, tattoo and piercing businesses, tanning salons, and waxing businesses. That was put in yesterday. Anything not described above are closed to the customers, but the use of drive-through, pickup, delivery, and curbside options are allowed and encouraged. So retail that is not described above, they're either not explicitly all the way open like a grocery store, nor are they closed, such as food service. They may continue to work, they just will not allow retail customers in the facility. Okay? So commonly called like-the-ship-to-store, and we've seen several of the local retailers do that. We've listed a few commonly asked questions, I do expect this list likely to grow rather than to shrink, but it's based on activity from last night to this morning. Churches and places of worship, such are open to the staff and available to perform the functions necessary to continue to have online, telephonic, email, and other services. Includes production of such services. The second is landscape services and landscape supply. Those are open, but they are subject to the social distance and the occupancy limits as appropriate. Obviously, actually out doing the landscaping would be different than going to a supply store. Construction trades are repeated, they are open, but subject to the distancing and the no gathering greater than 10. Numerous questions upon that today. Outdoor entertainment and recreation, those are closed under the current declaration, those are closed. Your golf courses, basically the inside is closed, clubhouse, restaurant, those related items, they are closed. If the course can function within that limit, the course itself is allowed to remain open. Computer support, computer support services, those are open to provide support services. The retail is closed to customers, but is available through the pickup, delivery, curbside, and related. Auto sales, those are closed on a retail level. They are available through online and related transactions, also allowing pickup. This does not affect the service, the parts, and that piece of it. Okay? So there's a little bit of a line drawn between theirs. Council, this is the state of where we stand now. Again, this comes before you tonight. This will be the chance to wrap up what has been done to this point, and to make appropriate adjustments that are necessary. So I'll stop on this part of it before I go to the next, and Mayor, if there's any questions or discussion?
Before we go to questions, Mr. Atkinson, I'd like you to spend some time talking about sort of the process that we used around how we got to these decisions. I think that would be helpful, the people that we've consulted, I think particularly in light, you might explain a little bit about the social distancing or the, the extra precaution we've taken at a council level. I know you're planning on talking about that a little bit later, but I think it's appropriate to talk about that right now, and, and I think it adds a bit of color to this conversation too, a little background that would be helpful.
Certainly.
Certainly for people watching us, but maybe even for some people in the room.
Yeah, so we'll take that up first, the, the measures we have tried to put in, tried to put in place for the city council. I've had my temperature taken twice today, just in case anybody's curious, I'm in good shape.
Has everybody else had theirs taken?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I've not.
I'll get that taken care of, we'll have that done momentarily.
What about all the people in the room?
If they're on the first, on the second floor, they should have had their temperature done this morning. I'll get temperature down here right now.
So as it relates to the council, and council, I really do appreciate the help that you've provided to us. Obviously, we are a bit constrained, more so than we would choose to be in this room, and to some extent also in your council chambers today. Every meeting facility that we are still using has been spread out as far as we can do it and still do our meetings. We do not intend to have any additional face-to-face meetings, but those restrictions that were lifted did not lift all of them, and we have got to be sure that it works, else we invalidate a meeting and have to do it all over again. And that was why we did not make the choice today. I contacted every member of the council. To me, it seems like a long time ago, it really wasn't all that long ago. Very specifically asked certain folks, if you can, please, stay, stay out of this building to the extent that you can do that. We made a conscious decision, certainly the mayor has been involved in this on even more than a day-to-day basis. We selected one council member who least met any of the risk groups, and detailed that council member to also participate and to assist with the mayor, that's Councilman Massingle. We've spread our staffs out, we've spread all of your meeting rooms out. When you get up today to your council conference room, you'll notice it's not quite as homey as it has been in the past, it has also been expanded. But why did we spread the council out literally and physically? And that's part of the council's what we call COOP, or Continuity of Operations Plan. We have to maintain the ability of our elected leadership to lead the community. Trying to keep that distance in all cases where it's possible is the best and the most important way to do that. It's also why we've minimized interactions in and out of our emergency operations center and those items as well. Mayor, you asked about various consultations, guidance that we have that's resulted in the various declarations that have taken place. Well, first and foremost, it's a public health issue. Public health response plans are well-known, they're longstanding, and they're well-tested. As a public health issue, you default to two immediate authorities. The first of those is your Director of Public Health here at the city, and that's Ms. Catherine Wells. Your second is your public health authority. Public health authority in Texas is a legal title. They absolutely are an authority on public health, but they have a legal status assigned by the state of Texas, that's Dr. Ron Cook and his associates. I don't believe there is a day passed that each time we are addressing, do we have a new case, what's the next response, what is a preemptive response, that we have not coordinated with both of those people. Beginning last week, you also saw the state of Texas step up. So of course, is Governor Abbott, but his lead public health authority is Dr. Hellerstedt. So they're providing information, both written, you've seen them in press conferences, we've continued with that. At the same time, we consult with our senior staff, with our emergency management pros. We've stayed in very close contact with our two major health systems here, as well as Texas Tech University, as they have worked through various responses. In addition to that, both through the mayor as the chief elected official, myself, our fire chief, and our emergency management personnel, early on, personal meetings or in-face meetings with the superintendents of our three larger districts, and then immediately transition those into phone calls. Those have continued through today, and they'll continue really through the pendency of what we're trying to do here. So, Mayor, anything else I could add to that?
I think that's a good summary. I'll, I'll open the, the floor for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Patterson-Harris.
I just have a quick question. This is in effect until April the 3rd at 6:30 PM, did I hear that correctly, is that the wrong time? Are, are subject to expansion?
Runs, runs through the end of the day, midnight.
Midnight, okay.
On April the 3rd, unless it's extended, or unless it is canceled.
A question with regard to the homeless shelters, how is that actually, what is the setup there? In the homeless shelters?
How they have physically set everything up, I don't know that I could speak to that. Catherine, could you?
And I have a little bit of information, particularly on Grace Campus.
We've had multiple meetings now with the homeless shelters and those serving all of our vulnerable populations, and they're really right now focusing on following those social distancing rules, and then looking at contingency plans of what we would do if we had a homeless individual sick, how we could separate different areas of the shelter to accommodate those who are sick from infecting those who are well.
Ms. Wells, before you leave, I think it's appropriate right now, first time we get to see you today. I think it's appropriate right now, first time we get to see you today.
Yes.
To thank you for your efforts.
Well, thank you.
And when I'm thanking you, I'm thanking a bunch of people behind you. Tonight, we'll be recognizing our meeting, the Health Department, and we'll be recognizing an empty pit because they'll all be working.
Yes.
But I just want to thank you for your, the way you've worked through this and how available you've been and your professionalism and your willingness to speak up and tell us what you think.
Well, thank you. We have an awesome team that is growing every day with people from environmental health working there, added LISD school nurses. I have a volunteer medical student who used to be an EPI at a local health department started coming in today to help us with all the other case investigations that need to be done that aren't coronavirus, so it's been a great team.
Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have other questions?
I was gonna tell you about Grace.
You want to add to that?
Grace Campus, they have the little houses, and so they have the ability to segregate. They even have dedicated some of the little houses, if they have to quarantine someone, they have a plan, and Sheila, if you haven't received it, I will forward to you.
Please.
Because they definitely have a plan, and there are about 80-plus individuals out there. So they've gone into action. They have been looking for additional shower and services, and we're reaching out to the community at large to see if someone would, some company would volunteer to let them have that because they can't afford the cost, but they definitely have a plan. I am not aware of what they are doing at Salvation Army. I think we do need an update on that, because those are the two that are actually sheltering. I got, and you probably did too, an email from Open Door. They're still conducting services by taping off the floor in small places, which I'm not sure is going to be adequate. And I wouldn't ask Catherine to put anything else on her plate, but I really wonder about that arrangement. So that's what I know.
I bet we could get other staff to help us understand that better. Open Door sent out a, their stance on this, but that's been better than a week ago. I think it might be appropriate to get an update. Ms. Atkinson, you think you could have someone other than the Health Department reach out to them for that?
You bet.
Thank you. Sounds like Ms. Murphy is working on that right now, so maybe we'll see something shortly on that. Great question, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Any other questions from you?
I think that's all I have right now. I couldn't, you know.
Okay, please, yeah, certainly. I'd love to, yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Mr. Chaddis.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson, a question on the church and places of worship?
Yes.
The last portion of it said including production of services? Now, are we talking about, when you say production of services, what are we referring to?
To provide the video, the online.
Okay, the electronical part of it, okay. Just want to make sure we clarify that.
Absolutely.
And the second question on the golf course. Everything shut down, closed, if I understood this correctly? But yet, you can walk on the golf course and play golf without going into the clubroom or clubhouse?
If they choose to allow play at those courses, that will be handled similar to how today you're handling a takeout meal from a local restaurant. They will be able to make that transaction outside and allow you onto the course.
Okay, not inside the clubhouse?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Mr. Christian?
Yes, I'd like to discuss the auto sales, closed to retail. We talked a little bit earlier about that there's a lot, most of the dealerships that I'm familiar with are doing internet and online sales, and most of those transactions can take out, can be taken care of outside the confines of the showroom itself. I would suggest that we amend that to online sales. The showroom is definitely shut down, but they can create, have appointments with customers that can meet them outside the building and do test drives and even make accommodations where the transaction can be completed outside the confines of the showroom. I think that would help a lot of the dealers in town, and I don't think that that's unlike what we were talking about with the golf course or some other retail stores that are doing online and having pickup and deliveries outside the buildings. There's a number of them. I think that we need to consider that so that that can be moved forward.
I think you make a good point. I think there's nothing about what we said here that would limit that. And I don't, I think if we try to think through every potential variable that we'll be doing that 24/7 until April 3rd at midnight. And so, you know, what we've, what we'd like to do is manage by exceptions. We've got a process set up to do that. If things come up, we'll look at them, but I, you know, you and I talked about it earlier. I've talked to, I've talked to two other, you know, major people that sell a lot of cars in this community this morning, and they all seem to be fine. I think they're along, I think what they're talking about is along the lines of what you just mentioned.
Well, I was just concerned about the wording of the way it says closed to retail. That's the first two words.
I think it is closed to retail. We, if the, and I'm gonna get a little chippy here, so I'm gonna put it out, but if the ingenuity would, and the effort around trying to stay open would be focused on finding ways to better work from home and protect our people, then we would all be better off. This, we're talking about a 10-day moratorium. And it's about trying to bend this curve so we can recover quickly. And it's just amazing, the loophole, people are trying to thread the needle on this thing instead of saying, yeah, we can figure out a way to do this. And what you're saying fits with that, and, but I just, it's remarkable what we've had to, what we're, the kind of things we're hearing about. I mean, I would answer, we had this citizen talk about, you know, PPE that's being used in a tattoo parlor? That's the wrong place for it to be used right now. The governor's, the governor's action on Sunday made that very clear. That needs to be used in our hospitals, okay? And if they own it, then they need to put it up for sale. That's where it needs to be used, because that's the only point we have in this community, in this region where the healthcare is, is it needs to be in our hospitals. And I'll get off my soapbox. But I just think that that's, you know, where we are. We, I'll give you an example of exception that they brought us to us, and we said, yes, that makes sense. There's a UMC clinic at the mall. Well, we sort of talk around, we make, we say, we say the mall has to close, but healthcare, you know, can't close. So we found a way to get, keep that clinic open, and we wouldn't have, they both, UMC and the mall raised that to us. We're able to quickly make a decision around that, and those are the kind of things we want to be able to. We, there's no way we could contemplate every potential on this order.
Mayor.
Mr. Massengill.
I would add that as we contemplate the creative ways to do business, that I believe that the 10-person gathering still applies. Okay? And then I would also echo what the mayor has said is we can't expend all of our effort trying to figure out who's in and who's out. We've got to understand that this is a message to use our common sense to try to protect our community. It's a public health emergency, and if we can just use a little common sense about how we conduct our business for a very short period of time, then we can get back to business.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that we're saying for a short period of time, but I also know what people believe and think is that this will get extended or it will get smaller. So I want the public to know that the council as a whole has not been involved in these decisions except for that emergency meeting. The only two people who have really been involved have been the mayor and Mr. Massengill. The rest of us, because of the rules that we operate by, have not really been consulted or talked to. And the reason, I guess that we're sitting here today, which I'm not real happy about, because I believe that there are other ways to conduct this meeting. We really haven't had input. And, but we've had calls, and we've had emails, and we've had concerns from citizens. You know, at Mr. Rio's, what he says is true, then we're wasting our time anyway, because it's too late. Now, I don't believe it's too late, but I want to share with you an experience that I had on Monday morning. The, um, some of the supermarkets have decided that seniors can come on Mondays and Thursday at 7:00 AM until 9:00 AM. There is no social distancing taking place. I went to the one at Fourth and Sly because it's a smaller store. I thought maybe that would be a better situation. I hadn't been to the grocery store in over a couple of weeks. And when I got there, people were lined up back to back, because they wanted to be the first people in the door to get the toilet paper. That's what happened. And when we got in there, there was no limit on the number of people in the store. You were next to people, I don't care what you did, you couldn't distance yourself unless you just walked out. And that was, a temptation was just to walk out. There was no way on checkout of distancing. The only way you could distance yourself was to take your basket and make sure that somebody didn't get close to you. I haven't been to Walmart, not going to Walmart, because there's no distancing taking place there. There are no controls. You have families, you have children in those facilities. Those are the two most likely places that we can come in contact. They don't take temperatures when you come in the door. They didn't look at IDs to see if everybody was 60 or over. Didn't really matter to me, one way or the other. There's just nothing going on there. Now, maybe they're cleaning, doing some things like that, don't know. But if my experience is any indication of what's going on in the city, there is no way we can control the supermarkets and places like that. They are the worst currently at enforcing the social distancing. Now, how do we fix that? I think we've got to get our heads together and do something about it. You know, last evening, when this latest declaration was made, there were questions about penalties. So I'm not surprised that there are people who are wondering about their businesses, such as the auto retail. How I do that, is that in violation? No wonder they're worried about that. I've had calls from insurance businesses. Of course, they're professional, but it doesn't say so anywhere, because as y'all have said, we can't include them all. But people, when you start talking about a $1,000 penalty, they, their ears perk up and they want to know. So I think there's a lot that can be done to this with our input from the council, because we're the ones who are getting the calls. I'm concerned about the churches. I don't know if we even have the constitutional right to do what we're doing. But we've got to have some input, and we've got to have some discussion by people other than staff and two members of the council to do that. This is, there are no winners in this deal, okay? We're all at risk. Some of us are more at risk than others, and we want to do what we can to protect. But I think we are kidding ourselves that we can say that grocery, convenience, and package stores are exempt, are essential services, without some major controls over that area. I don't think that shutting down a barber shop or a hair place is any different if you have controls in place over them. So I'm having a really hard time with this, the way it is structured currently.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Griffith, do you have anything to add?
Not yet.
I think you guys have heard a lot from me. I don't think you need to hear a lot more from me. There are a couple things that I think would be maybe as worth looking at. Mr. Atkinson, I had a text just while we were in here about a, maybe a potential 800 number that might, that we might use, or broadcast 311, or some way that would ideally put someone that had a question about this straight into a place that they could get their question answered. Just something for us to think about. I want to, I want to make a couple comments about just the conversations I've had around the community of the region that I think are maybe instructive to this. First of all, I've had people ask me about our banks. I think it's important to know that our banks are solid. The bank presidents that I've talked to said that locally, that it's been nothing like 9/11 where we had, there are a number of people that wanted to get their money out. We've had virtually none of that. You know, the markets, the stock market has been hit pretty hard, but the financial market has performed as expected. That doesn't mean that the banks won't have to work with clients down the road. They're already, the regulators have given them flexibility to work with clients to allow them to not pay their notes and just pay their interest, and they're working, there's a number of different things they have in place to work with. So even though the lobbies are closed, that's not, it's to the point about safety. It's not about, it's not about the security of the banks themselves. This morning, again, for, and I'm not sure how many times we've talked to them, but a handful of times, we talked to both of the hospitals, as Mr. Atkinson pointed out. Our hospitals are both in a position where they think they are ahead of this. The only thing they ask for is our help with personal protection equipment. They have a few other asks that we're helping them with, some fans that will allow them to provide, what kind of room do they call those, Ms. Atkinson? What's the?
Negative pressure.
Negative pressure rooms, which is the isolation rooms. So they're trying to take rooms that are generally not used for that and make, and give, retrofit them to that. We're helping with some swab kind of things that we use for testing, but they're, I'm very thankful for the preparation that they've done to get them to this point. They both have tightened down visitation, and I think to sort of what you were talking about, I think I would not be surprised to see them tighten it down again. The governor offered on Sunday, if we needed National Guard help to work at hospitals to help with the, you know, the doors and the access and all that, he would provide that. I've asked, and neither hospital feel like they need that. They feel like people have been very respectful to their guidelines. In fact, I think UMC tightened theirs up a little bit more even today, but it's still one visitor a day. It's just one visitor per person. Previously, depending on where you were in the hospital, it could have been multi-visitors. But remember that one of the reasons they're tightening that down, there's several reasons. Patient safety, number one, the safety of the caregivers, those nurses and physicians, and the people that support them, number two. And then the, I guess the third thing would be the people that are visiting, their safety. But maybe fourth and underlying it all is that many of those visits require that the visitor wear PPE and that personal protection equipment, and when they do, then it becomes something that has to be thrown away. We need, we need to save that for, to deal with the crisis. That's why on Sunday, that the governor prohibited all elective surgery, non-essential surgeries. In essence, our surgery centers, when they're not providing In essence, our surgery centers, when they're not providing something that's life, uh, that's life-threatening, it's not exactly the language they use, but they, they, they should not be operating. Once again, it's about, it's about those resources that, that we talked about. So the, the other thing that I think is, is important for us to always consider in Lubbock is that even though our, our number, I think, just went to ten cases, we serve a much larger we, region. And, um, the twelve, you know, one of our, you, one of our hospitals this morning talked about a handful of cases from eastern New Mexico, from as far away as Tucumcari, that are in, in their hospital. So when we think about Lubbock, we need to think about the South Plains and eastern New Mexico because that is our healthcare footprint and that's what we'll continue to support. That will, that will not, that will not change. I think there's more good news on the horizon from the testing standpoint. I think there's potentially an effort, um, UMC is, it's fair to say, is looking at maybe doing more. And I think you'll see by the end of the week that Covenant very well may be doing the same thing. So that there's, I think that is good news. We're so thankful to what UMC has done around testing. It's been, uh, uh, we knew that once we had more people tested, that we would have more cases. Mr. Rios's point, I don't know about all of his points, but to that point, I, I, I agree with him. And I think that's good for, it helps public health. It helps us make good decisions. That, that data allows us to make better decisions. I'd be more than happy, counsel, if you have questions of, of me as to, you know, why we've done what we've done or why we've not done what we've done, or why we've not done something. I would, I'd be more than happy to try to explain what my thought process was, if, if you'd like to, to, to talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, we, we, I think we all just got an email. And the question was, package stores, are we talking about UPS? Are we talking about alcohol? I think we're talking about alcohol. Don't you? In this, where it says grocery, convenience, and package stores, we talking about alcohol?
That, that is correct. And that's common language throughout the various orders in the state.
So, you know, I think there's some people have a real issue with that. The other thing, and this was something that came to my attention, was that there'd been a run on ammunition. So what about gun stores?
We talked about that. And there's some, us-
They're going to be, uh, on the, the second page. This upside-down staple is very confusing. I would suggest the way it's currently stated, that those are retail establishments not described above. So the showroom part would be closed. They can still transact, though. The, the showroom part, I think, is likely closed. And I do think that's an excellent point that we need to discuss. But I think it's closed, but they're still able to transact. They're still under all their federal firearms licensee rules and so forth.
Well, for example, one of our local sporting goods store is all encompassing. It has everything from clothing to equipment to guns to ammunition. And they're operating. We just, we've got to, we've got to look at this a little more closely. At the same time, we need to let people go about business without being constantly in fear. Part of this hoarding that we've seen is from people getting hysterical because they think they're not going to have enough toilet paper, enough food, or whatever. And I think some of what we have been doing has contributed a bit to that. I, I want people to know this is serious and I, and there's some people, you could hit them over the head with this and they won't think it's serious. So we do the best we can. We put the rules out there and we have put them out there. You know, wash your hands, social distancing. We've done all of that. But now we're down to the point where we are really affecting people's lives and their livelihood and the economy. You know, I guess the good thing about keeping, uh, package stores open is you collect more sales tax. But you're shutting it down in other, in other places. There's an article in AJA Today, I hope some of you will read, that talks about, uh, employment, where we're losing jobs, but where we're gaining jobs. And so some of this needs to have more of a positive spin and I'm, when I'm, when we're talking about the future. Because right now, people are just stuck in place and in fear. And they need to know that, yeah, some of us are going to get it. You know, I may be one of them after Monday morning. And, and some of us may die, but it's not the end. What Catherine Wells is doing out there is trying to at least alleviate exposure. And I think that's great. But we can't live in fear. We have got to continue what we're doing as a society. And this really, what we're doing really kind of doesn't promote that. So I'm going to be quiet.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to add some thoughts in regards to what Ms. Joy said. I'm sitting here thinking. I'm less concerned about our good, solid business communities, business owners in our community, about those people will do the right thing in regards to, I mean, exception in grocery stores, that's, that's a toughie. That's really is a toughie. Because we're a touchy-feely, handshaking people. And for us to completely change our cultural thoughts about how we interact with each other is really hard. It's going to take a lot, a lot of work for, to change that dynamic. It just is. But our small business owners, that that's their livelihood, that's the way they make an opportunity for their employees and to feed their families. I think that they're going to do the right thing to try to make sure that that social distancing takes place, that they're cleaning their businesses. Uh, I talked to one, uh, business owner yesterday that owns a shooting range. The things that they're doing at that shooting range because they have ongoing, um, license to carry classes was amazing, what they're doing as far as to keep that place clean and sanitary and distanced. The thing that bothers me is the individual's responsibility. The people that don't have a business, that don't have any dog in the hunt, other than they think they can do what they want to do when they, whenever they want to do it. And those are things that bother me because those are almost uncontrollable. But I think most of the businesses that I'm aware of and that I have relationships with, they're going to go above and beyond if we start to ask them and say, you need to step up your game as far as doing these things that washing hands, uh, social distancing, disinfecting your business whenever possible. It's a toughie. But just in closing, I don't have as much problem. I don't, I, I, I think our businesses are going to take care of business, if you will, in regards to those things.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Patterson.
While I've been away, I've received quite a few calls and asked quite a few questions along the lines of liquor store. I received, uh, a message from someone and I've, I've passed that on from individuals who are concerned with that setup. And I, I didn't quite get that as to why we were looking at liquor stores remaining open. And I, I sort of think, well, maybe because the grocery stores are and they, so I, I, I don't know. It was just kind of baffling. But I also received calls from individuals who have barber shops and beauty salons. And anymore barber shops and beauty salons are places that you just walk in and get it done. A lot of them are taking appointments and things of that nature. So you're not having the massive influx into the establishments like you, you once did. So I, I think we have to really be careful how we say that it's okay for this one to do it by appointments, but this one cannot. And it, it's difficult, man, I tell you. It is a difficult situation because at the end of the day, we're concerned that people are kept safe. I have a, an old man, a dad at home that I've, I've remained away from places in an effort to make sure that he remains in good, good, good position. But I think we have to be careful and it is a hard thing. It is something that I don't think that we rush into and just make a decision. We've kind of been put in that, in that, that spot because things have been happening the way that they have. And, and the thing that brings it to my mind is because a lot of these places, that's how they make their money, by the fact that these people come in. And if they don't, they don't have anything to make it, to even get to those grocery stores to buy some of those things. I, 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 I don't know. It's, it's, it's a perplexed situation. It is. And I, I would, and, and I said it the other, the other day, and I said now I would, that, uh, people act sensibly and use common sense in this thing. But I think it's going to take some time to really look and hash out. I would that, that all would be well in it, but it's a difficult place to be. But I think we must be careful from, you know, giving the thumbs up to one spot and not to another.
Mr. Chides.
Thank you, Mayor. Question. Hopefully we'll, hopefully we will not get there. But has the conversation been held about shelter in place? At what point do we go to shelter in place?
Mr. Atkinson, you want to start with that one?
Certainly, Mayor, if you don't mind. And, uh, of course, I don't think I have been in every conference call that's gone on because there's way more than, than can be done at any one point. But one of the common themes that I am hearing, we did hear this again in some of the stuff the governor had Sunday. When you look at some of our larger metro areas throughout Texas right now that are having, and some people call them clusters, some call them blooms, but there's a prevalence of cases in a relatively concentrated area. It appears to me that the big impact that they're trying to mitigate is overrunning the capacity of their healthcare system. Okay? Part of the governor's orders that came out Sunday, uh, mayor mentioned the, uh, correct term, non-elective procedures, basically. Those are canceled statewide. Statewide. It's not necessarily a shortage of the doctors and the healthcare workers. It's an effort to protect availability of beds. It's an effort to protect the availability of PPEs. But that truly is the biggest resource challenge in Texas right now. It, it is getting masks and gloves and gowns and, and those related items. So a lot of the discussion that we heard Sunday, we've heard it at a lesser level before and it's certainly ramped up this week, is ensuring that the healthcare system, and it's that whole flatten the curve deal. It's not that we're going to be able to change the net number of people who become infected. It's trying not to infect them all in a concentrated period of time, but rather to spread it out. So I, I do think one of the, one of the main things they're looking for in those stay-home, shelter-in-place curfew-type orders is to flatten out and keep your healthcare system open and available as serious cases come in. It's part of the discussions we, we're having every day with the hospitals. Are you in that position? And now they're not.
If I may add to, or add another question to that. April the third keeps coming up in many conversations.
It matches what the governor did when he pulled the ten-person trigger and that initial closed school orders and those things. That, that's where that comes from.
So we can continue what the path we're on right now? Maybe get a little bit more drastic over this, how we're looking at, maybe on April the third? Or, or it happens towards direction the governor says?
Well, I, I believe the governor is on air right now.
Okay.
I, I don't have any particular nod, you know, as to what his discussion will be. There was a letter submitted to the governor sometime late last week, Saturday or Sunday. Many of the healthcare networks in the largest cities were requesting a statewide shelter in place. The governor declined to do that. And he very plainly and more than once, he said, you can do that at the local level and you may need to. And if you do, I support you. But at that moment, there were roughly two hundred of the two hundred and fifty-four Texas counties that did not have a case. And so he declined to do it on a statewide basis. I'm sure the pressure on him to do that has not changed, but that was his deal. In a more direct response to your question, the declaration that stands before you today, per state laws issued by the mayor, and it is valid for seven days. We've put the April the third date in there because you have this council meeting today. You can choose to extend that order. You can modify it. And certainly, based on discussion today, we, we want to have those discussions. You can pick it up and carry it farther. Any of these can always be canceled too, at a moment's notice. Does that help?
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Good question. I, I think it would be, I think it's something that I would encourage each of you to do is to read in detail through one of these shelter in place act or, or orders. I've had a chance to read the Dallas and Austin order. It, it sounds like something, but it's, it really is something very, very different. And it's not, it's not very different than where we are today. And so, and we, that was something that we took deep consideration, you know, around as, as we made this, this, made the action. So I, I really encourage you to do that. The, the Austin one is very easy to read. I think, um, it's, it's, it's easier than the, I thought the Dallas one was more difficult to read. The Austin one goes into very great detail. And I think we may have, did you all see that today by email? If not, I know, Mr., we can, we can get legal to send it out to us. It's, I think it'd be worth looking at. Not that we want to mimic that, it's just I think it's, it's good education.
Well, and one thing I do want our businesses to know, I, I know we've couched all of this in terms of essential services, but every business in the city of Lubbock is essential, okay? We want you. You've supported us. You've paid your, most of you've paid your taxes or whatever. And I don't at any time want you to think that we don't value, uh, our businesses. And I think about kind of the way this is worded, well, some of you are essential, some of you are not. That's not true. You're all essential.
Mayor Protem.
It's not a time to panic. It's time to, and I appreciate this council's discussion. It is a time to analyze this. I've read through it. The more I thought about it, uh, I feel like it's appropriate. It is picking winners and losers. And to your point, Ms. Joy, that ain't right. A lot of things in life aren't fair. This situation we're in is not fair. Remember that we have the ability every day, Mr. Christian, to your point about how some of our citizens aren't acting as well as we want them to with social distancing. Some are not going to take advice very well. But in our, in this city, there's enough media, including city-owned media. But there's enough media to make sure that we're getting the word out on social distancing, washing your hands, washing your hands. My hands are, my knuckles are raw, Ms. Patterson-Harris. I've washed them sedan, like, excuse me, French. But, yes, I do. But, but I truly believe that what we need to make sure we're going to do for the next two weeks, whatever our date is, whatever we do, the most important thing we do. two weeks, whatever our date is, whatever we do, the most important thing we do is how we inform citizens of this city and this region. Because you're right, not everybody's getting it. The majority of people are. The majority of businesses are. But not everybody is. It's not a time to panic. It's a time to step forward and make sure that everybody personally has the ability to stay away from me or her. I did say that, didn't I? But, but we can do this. We're, we're, we will prevail. This is our opportunity to shine, take care of our citizens. I think that this is appropriate. I'm not ready for shelter-in-place. I think that you'd have to have a heck of a lot more communal positives before that would be discussion. And obviously, Mr. Chodis, I'm not a medical professional, as you know. I have played one on television repeatedly. Dr. Christian, also. By the way, Dr. Christian, your socks match your gloves. Congratulations. But I'm not trying to make light of this, but what I'm trying to do is, let's take this negative and make it a positive. This is our chance. It is scary. We can do this by making sure citizens are aware. Not everybody's going to act right.
It's going to take the community.
That's right.
It's going to take the community to do this.
And sometimes that the best thing that happens is some peer pressure, Mr. Chodis. I agree. Thank you.
Let me clarify.
Please, please.
When I, when I was asking about shelter-in-place, it was just a matter of information for the public. Because there's some great misunderstanding about shelter-in-place. And again, it's just going to take the public to get out there and do some research and find out. There's so many levels of it. And I'm very well aware of what it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chodis. I think it was a great question. In fact, our, one of our speakers tonight described a shelter-in-place model that's not being used anywhere in the country, nowhere, nothing close to that is being used anywhere in the country. And so I can't imagine something like that going into place, but I think the education around it is very important. Ms. Joy?
Well, in a lot of the shelter-in-places, you still can go to the grocery store, to my point earlier. So how does that help you? What we have here is a, what I would call a modified shelter-in-place. It's what you have, and it tells you what you can and you can't do. I still want us to look at those, and I want us to talk about making some changes to those this evening before we consider approving or not approving, whichever.
Mr. Masagil?
Couple of things as we contemplate this. This is a summary guideline document, okay? There's also, the declaration is the main document that, that sits behind this. There's also another document that's direction from Homeland Security, which gives us direction as a local government on what is considered essential and what isn't. The development of this was not to pick winners and losers. The development of this was to identify those establishments where you could potentially have a concentration of face-to-face transactions, which would further the spread of the virus. I think if you studied many of the orders across the state, that ours is very, very similar to what we see happening across the entire state of Texas.
Okay. Any other, any other comments on item 2-1? Okay, we'll do that, we'll now go to 2-2, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Interest of time, we'll move very quickly to this. Ms. Abbey?
Excuse me, Mr. Atkinson?
I appreciate, excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would recommend, and I don't know how, how quickly this can be done, but if this is not essential business, I think we should do this very, very rapidly, out of respect to everybody in this room. I'd like to make that comment that it needs to be done rapidly if we, or not do it at all.
What's rapid?
Mr. Atkinson, what is rapid?
I would say two minutes or less, simply to show you the link and how you may access this and look at it at your leisure.
And I assume your comment is based upon just concern around hygiene, social distancing, health, is that right?
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize.
Well, and as a group, we're going to be here for a long time.
So, but out of respect to everybody else in the room, that, and I apologize that y'all have been sitting so long. Two minutes is great. I'm for that. Is that okay? Thank you.
Sally, if you'll start on the homepage, walk us right into that dashboard page. And I think that'll take care of it for today.
All right. Thank you. On your iPads, and for those of you at home, you can go to the transparency page of the City of Lubbock website, and there's a lot of things there to look at. But if you'll scroll down to the, to the list of items, it says maps, citizen self-service, which is our portal to our permitting and licensing online, but also public information involved with that. Performance metric dashboards is what we're here to talk about today. Go ahead and, if you'll click on that, please. And so you'll see that there's a dozen departments here, departments and areas here that have been selected to be shown to the public, to show the various metrics that each department reports on every month. And Sarah, if you'll go to code enforcement, we'll use that one as our one example. Down, right there. Just to show you one example of how we, how this works, and I also want to say thank you to Sarah and all the GIA staff who were involved in this. The City of Lubbock Code Enforcement, if you look at the top right corner, there's a little stack there. We call, they call that a hamburger. And it shows the links that you can get to from each department's page, the city homepage, the code enforcement homepage, and any other particular items. The code enforcement monthly code cases is something that I think the council is all familiar with, but might be of interest to our citizens. There's all the code, housing, housing, junk vehicles, weeds, rubbish, zoning cases that are listed here are service metrics. So they're blue. They show up as discounts of what, what's involved. The things that are on the, each page that are red, yellow and green are performance metrics. Green shows that the goal has been reached. Yellow shows that it's still not, not reached for that month. And so I would suggest that you look at the, there's tabs for history and details that provide information on, additional information on each one of these. I would suggest that you look through those, and then if you have any questions, you can direct those to, to either the appropriate department head, or if you have technical questions, send those to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Masagil? You look like you wanted to say something.
Well, I can't scroll, but maybe, I don't know if that's, I can scroll on the other pages, but when I get on the...
My police page is not scrolling, is that what you're saying?
Looks like we've got a technical. But other than that, I'm excited to see it. I'll take the time to study it, but it looks like we've got some type of issue in the background on that.
Individual pages are just screen size.
Okay, so that's it. Okay. All right. Perfect. Excellent. Well, I'd say just with a cursory review that I'm, I'm ecstatic. I, I, I think this is what we should be putting in front of our citizens, and it's what we've agreed that our performance standards should be, and it lets us grade ourself every, every month. So it's excellent.
Thank you.
It's really good. I know that we'll, maybe we'll tee this back up, maybe, Mr. Atkinson, at a future work session to spend a little, few more minutes on it. Okay? Ms. Abbey, thank you for you and your team's work on this. I know it's taken a lot of work. Thank you guys so much for that. Okay. I think that takes care of our business for work session today. We'll, we'll hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and to discuss personnel matters under section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. And also, finally, to discuss commercial or financial information as it relates to economic development under section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. It is 2:53, and we're, are recessed to executive session. Good afternoon. It's 4:58. Today is Tuesday, the 24th of March, 2020. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We have returned from executive session. We will continue with our ceremonial items before gaveling into our regularly scheduled Thank you for being here today, or for watching on the world wide web. We've had sort of an unprecedented last 10 days or so in our community. And we're thankful tonight for the leadership of our city, and most, most, I think, most certainly for the men and women who are on the first, front line of what we're dealing with in our city and our state and our country. And that's our first and foremost, our medical professionals. But it's also our first responders, those that wear uniforms and those that don't. And we've got men and women who are making sure our grocery shelves, shelves are stocked that are first responders, just like our EMS drivers and our Lubbock Fire and Rescue and LPD officers. We're thankful for all of them. To open our meeting tonight, this is our, our tradition, we'll open with invocation. Tonight, Reverend Doug Hensley is going to open our prayer. Doug is the pastor, senior pastor at Forest Heights United Methodist Church, right there on the south side of Tech Terrace on 33rd Street. And following Mr. Hensley's prayer, the Mayor Pro Tem will lead us in the pledges. If you'd please rise. Mr. Hensley?
Senior and only pastor at Forest Heights. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, everyone else, please join me in a word of prayer. Thank you for this opportunity to do this, Mr. Mayor. Oh, Father God, we come to you, hearts filled with uncertainty, but also filled overflowing with hope. We thank you for this opportunity to pause in the midst of all this uncertainty and to reaffirm our faith in you. To remember that the hope we have is the only hope we need. Father, thank you for this mayor, for our city council, for staff, and for all of those who are making decisions for this community. Fill them with a spirit of discernment. Fill them with wisdom. Draw close to them so that they might know they can draw close to you and lean into you in these uncertain times. Father, I want to lift our first responders, our law enforcement, and our healthcare workers, particularly to you. I pray that you might put a hedge of protection around them. Let them know how vital they are to this community. Let them know how loved they are by you and by so many others. And Father, we, we lift our world to you. We especially pray for places that have been hard-hit, such as China and Italy and Iran. Father, I pray that their lessons may be our learnings. Father, we are so thankful that we live in a place where you are moving in a mighty way. We know that no matter what happens in the days ahead, you will be magnified and you will be glorified, that people will draw to you, and that faith will be shown in a mighty way. And so, Father, we just give you all the glory. We thank you for this place where we live. We thank you for an opportunity to pause and remember less who we are and remember more whose we are. It is in your mighty name that we pray together. And everybody said, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hensley.
My pleasure, sir.
Please join us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Pastor, thank you for, for that prayer. We really appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tem, thanks for leading us in the pledges. Okay, well, now, we have three special recognitions this evening. Mr. Christian, oh, he's already down there. You're camouflaged. Mr. Christian will present the first special recognition tonight in support of Lynch syndrome hereditary cancer awareness. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's ironic that one of you is this proclamation today, since I'm down with my madness and my loss, myself, coronavirus. Because I am, and our family, who have borne them four generations, has been a victim of Lynch syndrome. I guess I'm trying to do this recognition, including myself today. Just give you a little history about Lynch syndrome and our family. I had a cousin that then, several years ago, did a family tree, you know, family history of cancer within our family, and at the top of the list...
Thought I turn, thought I'd turn it on us now, but at the top of the list was when my grandmother died of ovarian cancer in 1930, when my mother was five years old. And on that side of a legal pad was completely full, and the other side was completely full of family members that either fortunately survived or passed away from cancer because of Lynch syndrome, which is a genetic, genetic flaw in the DNA of our family. This is, I'm now in my third battle with cancer. In my first one, there really wasn't a name for what all of this was, and now it's, but now I know that it's Lynch syndrome. So the reason I wanted to do this proclamation, because I've run into quite a few people since I started, became public with my last cancer battle, they've come up to me and goes, oh, maybe now I know why we've had multi-generations of cancer within our family, and they had got tested and they tested positive. So now that they, they're on the alert, not only for themselves, but for their children and their children's children. Take care of yourself. Talk about your family history, your health, your family's health history, whether it's cancer or other diseases. That conversation could certainly save your life. So I'll let the, read this special recognition. Lynch syndrome is a hereditary condition that causes great risk of developing colorectal cancers, intermetrial cancers, uterine tract, ovarian, pancreatic, and other types of cancers. Knowledge of family history and the sharing of that history with a physician and family members may lead to early diagnosis of hereditary cancers such as Lynch syndrome, and thereby increasing the chance of effective life-saving treatments. Regular screenings for colorectal or intermetrial cancer, as well as other early detections and medical surveillance steps, are recommended and are critical to the diagnosing of Lynch syndrome in an early stage, and these screenings can be a life-saving measure. And whereas by declaring Lynch syndrome, Lynch Syndrome Awareness Day, we create an opportunity to increase awareness of this heredity condition that causes a great risk of cancer and to encourage all residents to make a...
encourage all residents to make a proactive diagnostic investigation of Lynch Syndrome by utilizing simple and direct information regarding multi-generational family cancers and by ensuring that that appropriate patient and families are offered easy access to genetic testing and are provided with education and management plan to help them prevent death from Lynch Syndrome's related cancers. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the great city of Lubbock, Texas, to hereby recognize, have special recognition to Lynch Syndrome Awareness and encourage all citizens to consider their family medical history and pursue the appropriate screenings to determine if they are a family member, has Lynch Syndrome, this date, the 24th day of March, 2020. I appreciate the opportunity to let, to let people know more about Lynch Syndrome. And as I said in closing, please talk to your families about your family history, health history, regardless of what that, that problem may be, whether it's cancer or any other. So, God bless y'all. Thank y'all very much, and appreciate the opportunity to tell you about this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian. We have two recommendations or, excuse me, acknowledgements that we would like to do now. And I'll let, I'm gonna let the city manager recognize both our Health Department and our Accounting Department for accomplishments that they have achieved this year. As I work my way down, Mr. Atkinson, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first item tonight is recognition of your Public Health Department for what is known as Project Public Health Ready. I think we're going to do this in absentia. Obviously, your Public Health Department is pretty timely. They have been in action seven days a week now for several days. This recognition comes from the National Association of County and City Health Officials. And what this does is it tests and evaluates our Health Department's ability to plan for, respond to, or recover from public health emergencies, and certainly that's where we are today. Our Health Department was able to document and demonstrate that they met all of the preparedness benchmarks that are required by Project Public Health Ready. And this is a partnership between the National Association and for your Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Most importantly, this designation has been awarded to less than 20% of local health departments nationally. So your Public Health Department in Lubbock certainly resides in a very elite company, and I think we're seeing all their skill and dedication right now dealing with the situation that we are. So with that, Mayor, let's possibly give them a quick hand, and I'll move to your next one.
Yeah, let's, before we do, we're gonna certainly recognize our Health Department as once we work our way through the coronavirus situation we're in right now. But we're thankful for them. If you'd join me in giving them a round of applause.
Mayor, as Brack Bullock comes forward, I'll talk to you about the next one. This is now the 38th time, the 38th time that your City of Lubbock Accounting Team has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is commonly called the CAFR Award. This is for the fiscal year ending September 2018. The process that Brack and his team undertake is four months long. So this is in addition to your CAFR, or what we call our audit usually. Financial statements are tested, they're evaluated by third-party audit firms. We eventually bring that to the city council for your review and ultimately approval. Once you have done so, we then take that same process and submit it to the Government Finance Officers Association. There are professional staff and a special review committee then that grade our CAFR. They determine compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, program policies that GFOA has adopted. Review is four to six months in length, and it encompasses 760 distinct different criteria to look at and decide, do we receive this award? This award recognizes Brack and his team for their high level of professionalism, and I think probably maybe even more important than that, this is how we prove back to the city council, to you as elected leaders, to the public, that we are properly accounting for and being fully transparent in the use of those public funds with which we are entrusted. So Brack, from myself and the city management team, thank you. We certainly appreciate it. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. On behalf of the city council, the citizens of Lubbock, we want to congratulate our Accounting Department. This never gets old. This is one of those stamps of approval that it's important, it's very important. So, Mr. Kostalich, you, to Brack, to the entire team, and who, we've asked Brack to represent the entire team tonight in our effort to try to avoid any social spread of any virus. And we will do our appropriate distancing here in a moment, but please help me recognize the, our accounting team. No hugging tonight, right, Ms. Passion Harris?
It's killing me, man.
I know, I know it is. I appreciate you bowing to me now, though, that I like a lot. So, we're bowing, we're bowing to each other, I should say.[1018.13][1018.13](laughter) I don't want to get in trouble on that one. Okay, we had, I'll call our regular meeting to order. It's 5:14. The first item on our agenda tonight is item five, citizen comments. We do not have any citizen comments, any citizens signed up to comment. We had a couple in our work session today. We'll move now to item six. Those are the minutes, they begin on page 100. Included in our package, our agenda today, are covering our agenda, are the minutes from the February 10, 2020, special city council meeting at the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance. Also, the minutes of the February 20, pardon me, February 25, 2020, regular city council meeting. Council, to begin discussion, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Chidus. Counselor, are there additions or corrections to these minutes? Okay, seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve item 6-1, the minutes from the February 10 special meeting and the February 25 regular meeting. All those in favor of approving those minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Council will now move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda begins with item 7-1 on page 118. Items considered to be routine and enacted by one motion without separate discussion are included on the consent agenda. If the council desires to discuss an item, that item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. Tonight, we are going to consider items 7 and 8 separately, I believe. Is that correct?
Mayor, I believe that is, I don't think we have to consider that one separately now tonight.
We don't. Is that correct?
I believe that to be correct, Mayor. We do not need to pull that one for separate consideration.
So 7 and 8 has been pulled for separate consideration? Are there any other items that need to be handled separately? Council?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't understand. 7 and 8 does not need to be considered separately.
That's my understanding, that's my understanding. So it will, it will not be pulled. I probably was not clear. I'm gonna make sure your microphone's turned on there, Mr. Weaver. We don't want to miss out on an opportunity to hear from you. Okay, so counsel, if I understand it correctly, we will consider the consent agenda as presented without any pulls. Is that correct? If that's correct, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Massengill for the motion, Mr. Griffith for the second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, counsel, let's now move to item 8-1. Counsel, item 8-1 is on page 325. If it pleases the council, I would like, if it pleases the council, I would like to suggest we go to item 8-18, which was, is part of our emergency agenda. I'm in it. I believe we all have this. Mr. Weaver, while we put our hands around this, if we see, if we brought it down from upstairs, which I don't believe I did, it looks like Ms. Garza has this. This is unusual for us, an emergency item, and I thought it might be appropriate, thank you, for you to just give a bit of background as to, we have two of these tonight, and it just, the charter allows us to do this, but I think it'd be nice to hear from legal on this.
Sure. The state law allows us during an emergency to add items to the agenda supplementally with only an hour's notice, and that's what we've done this evening. The first item being the, in reference to the declarations, and I think counsel and mayor, we're waiting on copies of that. So that should be coming shortly, the resolution and the fifth declaration. And then the other item has to do with the council will take up later, the consideration to move the May election till November. So because of the governor's election, emergency orders, I should say, and the mayor's emergency orders, under the open meetings law, we're allowed to add items supplementally with an hour's notice, and that's why you have two items added to your agenda that were just added this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Counsel, it's okay with you, since we don't have those final copies yet, let's go back to 8-2, and we'll, we'll go down, we'll catch this at the, at the end of the meeting. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go to item 8-2. It's on page 330. These are, it's an item to consider appointments to the Community Development and Services Board. Ms. Joy, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have, I move to appoint, and these are new positions to the Community Development and Services Board after the changes that we made previously, from the private sector, Nitra Barnes, Rachel Forbes, and Roxanna Ensira.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Those are for the three private sector positions.
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chidus. Counsel, is there a discussion on Ms. Joy's motion to appoint Ms. Barnes, Ms. Forbes, and Ms. Ensira? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same sign? Thank you. That motion carries seven to zero. Now, we have three more appointments to that very same board, as those of you that have followed our progress over the last several months would, would realize, we're, we've reconstituted the Community Development and Services Board, and we, there are three appointments that were democratically selected by citizens, and I'm gonna let Ms. Garza give us just a quick bit of background on this, and then I'll ask Mr. Chidus for a motion. Ms. Garza?
Yes, Garza, can you get me that? Okay. Okay, and I think you also missed, Mayor, on 8.2, the three public elected officials, unless you wanted to wait on those.
No, I did. We'll come back, we'll go back to that.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Okay. Yes, Community Development did have three positions that by law had to be democratically selected, and so they had those elections, they've come back, and there were five people that applied for those positions, and the top three will be the ones that get those positions, and the council will be declaring them today, and I believe one of the council members might be declaring them today.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Thank you, Ms. Garza. Are there any questions, Ms. Garza? Mr. Chidus, can you help me with a motion on this, please, sir?
Certainly will. Thank you, Mayor. In connection with this item, 8.3, on behalf of the City of Lubbock pursuant to section 2.03, .033(c) of the Code of Ordinances, I hereby declare the following appointments for the low-income democratically selected positions on the Community Development and Services Board, all having received the highest number of votes in the online survey conducted from March 2, 2020, to March 18, 2020. The names are...
Mr. Chidus, read those dates again, please, sir.
Dates, March 2 of 2020 to March 18, 2020.
Thank you. So make sure we got that in the record, okay?
And the names are Petra Gamble, Leo Flores, and Nick Harpster.
Thank you, Mr. Chidus. I don't believe that requires a second. You're, we're just, that's just reading that into the record, correct? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chidus. It's, that takes care of 8-3. Let's go back to 8-2. There were, there were six appointments there. We got three of them. I'll go back to Ms. Joy for, there's, so there are three categories on this board, the elected ones that, that are elected by the, the people that are served, the private sector members that we appointed initially or first, and now we need, this way it's constituted requires three public elected officials. Ms. Joy, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Grace Gomez, Gilbert A. Flores, and Bill Stubblefield to the public elected officials positions.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chidus. Is there a discussion, counsel? All those in favor of the motion to appoint Ms. Gomez, Mr. Flores, and Mr. Stubblefield to the elected position officials, elected officials position on the Community Development and Services Board, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll now move to item 8-4. 8-4 is from planning. It's the first of six public, seven public hearings tonight. 8-4, items 8-4 through 8-10 are public hearings. Counsel, I thought we might start with Mr. Isom briefing us on all seven of those, giving us a chance in between each briefing to ask questions, and then we can decide how we'd like to handle these. Is that okay, counsel? Okay, so 8-4 is on, begins on page 332, and it is case 953a. Mr. Isom?
Give me just a moment there, getting me the clicker to move the slideshow along.
We're moving faster than the operations is tonight.
It's a first.
It is a first, at least in recent times.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item 8.4 is a request from Hugo Reed and Associates for Prudential Enterprises to change the zoning from multifamily District R3 to two-family District R2 at 1322 East 17th Street, generally located north of 19th Street and west of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Eighteen notification letters were sent out and none were received in favor or in opposition. The aerial for this site shows the lot is vacant with commercial developments to the south and east and residential developments to the north and west. The property surrounding the subject site is a mix of two-family districts to the north and east, C4 Commercial District to the south. and east, C four commercial district to the south along Nineteenth Street, and a small strip of multifamily district R three directly adjacent to the site. The future land use map notes that low-density residential is appropriate for this area. Beginning in the top left and moving clockwise, we have commercial developments to the south, vacant lot to the north, developed property to the west, and more commercial development to the east. While the future land use map calls for low-density residential in this area, the proposed district does meet the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and could provide an additional buffer between the single-family to the north and the commercial to the south along Nineteenth Street. The site appears to have adequate public access and infrastructure, and the proposed uses are consistent with the adjacent development. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on item eight four? All right, let's move to item eight five, zone case twelve forty-seven B, it's on page three forty-three.
So on item eight point five, the applicant is here tonight to withdraw this case, so if you don't want me to go through the presentation, I don't have to.
So this would be, eight five would be withdrawn, completely withdrawn?
That's correct.
So not moved to a later date?
That's correct.
Okay, counsel, counsel, are you okay with that? Okay, eight five is withdrawn? Okay, let's move to eight six, eight six is on page three hundred and fifty-eight, it's item, it's twelve, it's case twelve forty-seven C.
Item eight point six is a request from Hugo Reed and Associates for Prudential Enterprises to change the zoning from commercial district C three to single-family district R one, south of East Fifth Street and west of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Twenty-seven notifications were sent out, and none were received in favor or in opposition.
Mr. Mayor, before we move too far away from eight five, Mr. Holman's present, is that correct, that it's to be withdrawn?
Yes, Mayor.
I just want to be sure.
The aerial for this site shows the lots is vacant, with commercial development to the north and east, and residential development to the south. To the west, you have McKenzie Park South. The property surrounding the subject site is a mix of two-family districts to the west, C four commercial immediately adjacent to the subject site, apartment medical to the east, and single-family to the south. The future land use map does note that low-density residential development is appropriate for this area. Here we have some subject site photos, as you can see, most of the area adjacent to the site is currently undeveloped, with the exception of the nursing home facility to the east, and some single-family to the south. The future land use map calls for low-density residential in this area, and the proposal is consistent with the principles outlined in the comprehensive plan. The adjacent uses are consistent with the proposed development, and the site does appear to have adequate public access and infrastructure. The planning and zoning commission is recommending approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Okay, questions for Mr. Isom on item eight six? Okay, let's move to item eight seven, begins on page three sixty-nine, zone case one four two five F.
Item eight point seven is a request from Luis Sanchez to change the zoning from commercial district C four to single-family district R one, north of Fiftieth Street and east of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Nine notification letters were sent out, and none were received in favor or in opposition. The aerial photo for this site shows the lot is vacant, with single-family homes and vacant lots surrounding. The property surrounding the subject site is a mix of commercial C four and light manufacturing. The future land use map does note that this area has mixed use. Here we have some subject site photos, as you can see, most of the area adjacent to the site is undeveloped, with a sprinkling of single-family homes in the vicinity. So the future land use map calls for this area as mixed use, and the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, as it focused on the neighborhood preservation that exists. The adjacent uses are consistent with the proposed development, and the site appears to have public adequate, or adequate public access and infrastructure. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on item eight seven? Anything, counsel? Okay, let's go to eight eight, eight eight begins on page three eighty-two, it's zone case fifteen eighty-five J.
Item eight point eight is a request from AMD Engineering for Lubbock Christian University to change the zoning from R one, A one, A two, and C three to high-density, the high-density apartment district A two, for property generally located south of Nineteenth Street and east of West Loop Two Eighty-Nine. Sixteen notification letters were sent out, two were received in favor and three in opposition. And here we've mapped them out, it's kind of hard to see because it's such a large area, but they're in the single-family districts around there. One thing that we did get from the opposition was that more information on our notice might be important to some of the surrounding community, so we're working with our GIS team to update our notifications. The aerial for the site shows this area is part of the overall Lubbock Christian University campus.
I want to see Mr. Isom repeat that statement, you said the request was for more.
The neighbors wanted more information, like a map showing what property was being zoned, so we're working with our GIS team to update future notifications as they go out to reflect more information on the request.
So did they have concerns?
Their concerns were about traffic, and from talking to the staff planner that worked on the case, they were concerned about congestion that an apartment complex might bring, but once we spoke to him and said, this is for LCU, they're trying to expand some of the facilities on their campus, like their track and field, and then just get consistent zoning across their whole campus, it alleviated some of the concerns from the neighbors.
As I understand it, there were three in opposition, one was someone on commercial property nearby, who just wanted more information, the other two were actually homeowners, correct?
That's true.
Did you visit with both of them?
It's my understanding that the staff planner did, he's out of the office today, I can try to reach out to him to see what all he got, but.
But the location, Mr. Isom, where they're going to build the, you're going to get to this in a minute, I believe, maybe, right, yeah, it's, so it's, it's well in the LCU campus, it's, what I think of is just, would be just east of the old, or really, yeah, close to, maybe a little southeast to the old Midwest Little League fields, right, is that where this is on their, on their property?
It would be.
Where that lake is?
Right up here.
Okay, so it's a little further north than I thought it was, okay. Okay, now, please continue, Mr. Isom.
So this request is also part of a cleanup effort on planning staff and the LCU staff. Originally, in the mid-nineties, this was zoned to R one specific use, but no permits were pulled, so the zoning reverted back to the four different districts that they had, and so what we're trying to do is enable to get them the facilities that they need, as well as just consistency consolidate the zoning district all across the site. And so as I said, it shows on our maps as R one, but it is actually the different zoning So the future land use map notes this area is a mix of commercial parks, public and semi-public land uses. And we have some of the site photos showing the mix of development types that surround the campus, including some apartments, commercial and single-family housing. So again, the rezoning came about while we were working with them, primarily on this portion of the development, which is some track and field and soccer fields. So although the future land use map calls for public park and a mix of uses in this area, which is consistent with the development of a university campus, the adjacent uses are consistent with the proposed development, and the site appears to have adequate public access and infrastructure, and the planning and zoning commission is recommending approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Questions for Ms. Isom, Mr. Isom, Ms. Joy?
Just looking at this, the current zoning indicates single-family residential specific use, and that included family apartment, A one, high-density apartment, A two, and general retail, C three, was that the specific use?
So that's, that's where the cleanup is coming, this was rezoned to the R one specific use in the mid-nineties, however, no permits were pulled, so the zoning would have reverted back to the districts that they had, which were the mix of commercial, high-density apartment, things of that nature. It was never caught until they came in for the request, and we updated it as we did our notifications, and that's, now, that's the cleanup effort, is to get it back to one solid district all the way across their campus.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Isom?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Passion Harris?
Those who were in opposition, where are they relative to the zone request, you know?
Too, very hard to see, on the bottom left, there's a commercial property that's next to LCU campus that was in opposition, and then on the right-hand side, can't tell what street that is, it looks like right off Twenty-Ninth Street, there were a couple of properties, single-family properties that were in opposition.
Off of Twenty-Ninth.
Can you point to that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Mr. Christian?
To clarify, where it looks to me like on this, these maps, I'm very familiar with that location, and it looks like this vacant property is to the north of the current Lubbock Christian High Baseball Fields, and in between the US Post Office. You can see the baseball field very clearly on that map, so it's a good distance away from those people that are in opposition. Basically, there's virtually nothing to the, obviously to the east, except campus, and then if I'm not mistaken, there's some subsidized housing to the west of that lot also, just to clarify, because I said I'm very familiar with that location.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
That was the off course, wasn't it?
There was, yeah, to the south of the baseball fields.
Of course, to the south of that.
Of course, it's further south, yeah. Or the southern part. Other questions on, for, on item eight eight? Okay, let's move to item eight nine, eight nine is on page four hundred and three, it's item, zone case two zero eight two B.
So item eight point nine is a request from Jaime De La Cruz to change the zoning from single-family R one to two-family district R two for twenty-six oh nine First Street, generally located north of Marshes Sharp Freeway and east of University. Thirty-five notifications were sent out, and none were received in favor or in opposition. Here we show an aerial photo of the existing single-family home on the property. The purpose of this request is to increase the density to the two-family, so that he can add an additional unit onto this house. The site is currently surrounded by a mix of one and two-family zoning districts. Future land use map does note that low-density residential is appropriate in this area. Here we have subject site photos that show a mix of single-family development within the area. While the future land use map does call for low-density residential in this area, the request will not significantly change the level of intensity that's already in place. There are a number of registered apartments within this area, registered additional apartments, so there are quite a few lots that have two technical dwelling units on them already. The adjacent uses are consistent with the proposed development, and the site appears to have adequate public access and infrastructure. The planning and zoning commission is recommending of approval of the request by a vote of six to zero with one abstention, and the abstention is because he is the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Isom, Mr. Chidis?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Isom, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand or hear the purpose of switching over to R two?
Essentially, he wants to turn the single-family home that's there now into a duplex.
The existing home?
Existing home.
It has nothing to do with the home that's behind the house?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Other question, yeah, please, please continue, one.
I'm troubled, because it's a single-family residence, that doesn't sit well with me to bring in a duplex, or become a multifamily rezoning. It doesn't sit well with me, and I'm disappointed that the, that the neighbors did not show a yes or a no for that. I wish somebody had filled out the paperwork, the questionnaire that was sent out, just voicing my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Chidis, you'll have a chance again in a minute when we get to begin considering it, so that's good. Anything else on eight nine? Okay, let's move to item eight ten, it's on page four eighteen, it's zone case twenty-nine thirty-three E.
So item eight ten is a request from Beaton Bow Homes to change zoning from general retail, C three, and R one, to two-family district R two, and reduce setback, reduce setback, single-family, R one A, with a specific use for garden homes, for property generally located north of Ninety-Eighth Street and east of Upland Avenue. Fifty-seven notifications were sent out, one was received in favor, and none were received in opposition, and here we show the location of the only letter that was received in favor along Ninety-Fifth Street, north of the proposed development. The aerial photo shows the subject site is vacant, with the Quincy Park subdivision to the north and east, and undeveloped property to the south and to the west. The zoning map shows the site is a mix of general retail and single-family, with single-family to the north and east, and a mix of general retail and transition to the south and west. The R two request is in the area that is shaped like the letter T on your map, with the R one A specific use area in the lower right-hand corner of the map, and the lower left-hand corner would remain the general retail. The future land use map notes that low-density residential is appropriate in this area. Here we have some subject site photos that show the majority of the land located at this corner or this intersection is currently undeveloped. And here, they, the next two slides, they've provided us more of what I've built on, showing this one showing the location of the R one A with reduced setback, and this one outlining the location of the R two district. While the future land use map calls for low-density in this area, the request would provide additional buffering between future commercial development at the hard corner and the existing neighborhoods to the north and the east. The adjacent uses are consistent with the proposed development, and the site appears to have adequate public access and infrastructure. Planning and zoning commission is recommending approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Mr. Isom, would you put that site plan back up, we don't have that in our package?
Sure.
Okay, point, now, point two, what?
Sure, so.
It's the T is what we're considering, right?
They're actually, both items are being considered together.
That's right, I'm sorry.
So this, this T in the middle would be the R two district, and then this piece over here would be the R one A reduced setback for garden homes.
Counsel, other questions on item eight ten? Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom, we'll probably call you back. So it sounds to me like, let's, let's see, so first of all, we have eight five was taken off, so we don't, we're not considering that, and we, I know we're going to do eight nine separately based upon some of Mr. Chidis's comments, is that okay with you?
That's fine, yes, sir.
Counsel, are you okay with a public hearing for the other items collectively?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have a public hearing for items eight four, eight five, eight six, excuse me, eight four, eight six, eight seven, eight eight, and eight ten. And I'll open that public hearing right now. Once again, so public hearing for items eight four, eight six, eight seven, eight eight, and eight ten. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to any of these agenda items, please come All right, anyone that would like to speak in favor of any of these items, please come Good evening, Mr. Holman.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel, I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates, we're at sixteen oh one Avenue Inn. Yes, we did request to pull item eight point five at the end of, at the eleventh hour today. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on that to maybe give you some context, because it, in some sense, relates to item eight six. But before I do that, item eight four is on East Seventeenth Street, it's an old remnant zoning district R three, which reverts to the A two standards, it's right behind heavy commercial use, so an A two use, from a zoning standpoint, might make sense there, however, we can't build single-family or duplexes in the A two zoning district. So the best option for us was to look across the street, there was R two zoning there, R two zoning for these couple lots allows Mr. Castillo to do what he's been doing, which is constructing. which is constructing new homes in, in many corners of, of north and east Lubbock. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that before moving to the next one.
Questions on 8.4? Ms. Passion Harris?
So, the plan is to do the single-family homes on these, these two lots?
That's the plan, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Item 8, were there any other questions for me? Thank you.
Please continue.
Item 8.5 and item 8.6, we, we submitted those together. And admittedly, we got the cart way before the horse and we, we submitted too early and we didn't have all of our ownership lined up the way that we should have. We did get an opposition letter from one gentleman and we had to say, oops, we didn't mean to do that. So, we wound up delaying or postponing item 8.5 and 8.6 at planning and zoning. We came back the following month with basically the property that Mr. Castillo did own at the time, which was the item 8.5, which was half of the one block going to A1. That's the item that we have pulled. We still do intend to come back, maybe with a more refined, consolidated request at some later date, but we're not going to trouble you with that this evening. Item 8.6 is currently C4. We're asking to zone it down to single-family residential. There is single-family residential across the street. It just makes total sense from a zoning standpoint that you have similar uses across the street from each other. We had a good long dialogue with Ms. Patterson Harris yesterday. She had relayed to us that there were some folks that had raised some concerns and, and she went above and beyond the call of duty and, and helped us get in touch with those folks. We think it's a good, was always a good request and we appreciate her helping us kind of navigate through that. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Ms. Patterson Harris?
I've talked a whole lot of this, so I, I'm good with this.
You'll have a chance after we close the public hearing, too. Okay, anything else, Mr. Isom, Mr. Holman? Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Any other proponents, anyone else that would like to speak in favor of any of the items on our agenda tonight? Please come forward, sir.
Hello, my name's Weston McCowen. I'm with AMD Engineering at 6515 68th Street.
Good evening.
Mr. Isom pretty much covered everything well.
Remind us which case you're on.
This is the LCU project. They're gonna be putting, or we've designed the track and field.
8.8, Counsel, okay?
8.8, sorry about that.
Yes.
It'll be just directly north of the existing baseball fields for LCU. It's well north of the opposition that was received. If y'all have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Passion Harris?
Did you have the opportunity to, to speak with the individuals who had concerns?
I didn't personally speak with them, no, ma'am. I was just told that, or at least one of them, I was told they weren't under the assumption it was for an apartment, the zone change, but that's obviously, obviously not the case, so.
Other questions for the proponent? Ms. Joy?
In terms of what will be constructed there?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what, what's contemplated?
They're gonna have a track and a soccer field, stadium bleachers, and a little, the bathrooms and ticket office. Pretty much that's it. They're gonna add a new parking lot as well.
Okay, all right. And there's an existing soccer field there currently?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other proponents of items 8.4, 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, and 8.10? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how do you, how would you like to handle these zone cases? Collectively, that's what it looks like?
Handle them collectively.
Collectively, okay? Okay, let me, I'd like a, a motion then to, Mr. Maskell, could you give me, give me a motion on that?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to consider those cases collectively.
That's 8.4, 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, and 8.10.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, there's, motion by Mr. Maskell, second by Ms. Joy. Okay, well, let's have a, a discussion on that. Ms. Patterson Harris?
The item 8.7, always, that area always concerns me. It's kind of a hodgepodge of a sum of everything. I think they did an any which-a-way in that area, so the sum of everything. And, and, and I, I don't know if there's really any clear-cut way to even straighten it out, for lack of a better word. So, I think this happens often. I don't, I, I get concerned because of the, the type of, of businesses that are there and then the housing. So, I, I'm willing, if we've not had anybody to, to complain about it, I just get concerned about that area because it is all out of sorts. And, but I, I get concerned unless we see some type of way to rectify some of those issues. I'm, I'm, I'm good with, with going forward. I just get concerned with the way it's set up.
You're talking about 8.7?
Yes.
Yes, it's a bit of a hodgepodge.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think maybe even, that might have been a technical term that Mr. Isom used, I'm not sure, but, but it's... Other comments on, or questions on, Ms. Joy, do you have a question or comment?
I was just thinking, will time help with that perhaps as some of those uses go away?
I'm, I'm really not sure. Like I said, there's, it's just, some of the streets are paved, some are not. And it's just, there's a lot of industrialized stuff as a part of it. And then off in the center, and even in the middle of some of the housing, there's still some commercial spots. So, it, it, it's, yeah. Yeah, it'll, it'll keep you up at night thinking about it. But, but like I said, if we're not having anybody, you know, oppose this and the folks know what they're getting into when they go there and, and, and put those homes there, then I'm okay with it. I just, I've just been concerned for, for so long about that area.
I assume there's nothing hidden about what's located there if they are willing to, to do that? Okay.
Anything, other comments or questions? You guys are so spread out tonight. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to begin, to approve the, on first reading, items 8.4, 8.6, 8.7, 8.8, and 8.10. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same side? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, let's go to item 8.9 now. It's on page 403. We've had the public hearing, we've not had the public hearing, excuse me. We, we, no, we, we did not. We had the public hearing just for the others. So, we'll, we'll, we'll open the public hearing now for item 8.9. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this case, please come forward. Anybody in opposition to 8.9? All right, how about anybody in favor of, of 8.9? Proponent on 8.9? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Open the floor to, for a motion on item 8.9.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Chides?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Isom, I've got maybe a couple of questions for you, sir, if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
The proposed duplex, does, does this house meet the minimal square footage for a duplex? As it sits now?
I don't know that right off the top of my head.
Because there is a minimal square footage, am I correct?
When it goes through the review process and that's probably...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. When it goes through the review process is when they would be checking that. So, that's most likely, our reviewer caught it when it was coming in as it was a duplex or they met with them prior to requesting the zoning. But I don't know what the square footage of the home is right off the top of my head.
Okay, so if, if it were not to meet the minimal square footage, where, where, where do we go from there? What's the next step?
What, what I know their plan is, is to construct additions to the building.
Okay, they're gonna add on to the building?
Yes, sir.
Would that involve, again, you may not know this, the, the building behind the house? Would that be demoed also, or?
I'm not, I'm not sure what their plan is for the building behind the house.
Okay. Again, as I said, I, I'm troubled, but at the same time, the residents did not oppose. And I don't want to sit here on the dais and dictate to the residents, to the neighbors as to what's best for them. I'm just, again, I'm disappointed. I wish somebody had voiced their opinion, the neighbors at least. But since they did not, I find it difficult for me to oppose this. I know I personally would not want it next to my house or next to my property. But there's no opposition and I've gotta be the voice for the, for the community, for the neighbors at this point. Thank you, Mr. Isom. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Ms. Joy?
Well, looking at this, in our backup, it would be the only R2 amid, it looks like 12 R1 cases. And then across the street, Mr. Isom, what is across the street from that property? It's more lots, but I don't know if they're developed, are they developed?
To the north.
Page 410, Mr.?
To the north, there's single-family homes.
There's single-family as well.
And I believe there's, there's a school at the corner of First and Boston.
It shows a...
My quarter's just to the west.
But I understand, Mr. Chides, concern that you've got one R2 stuck in the middle of all the R1s.
Yeah.
So, if I look at it correctly, Mr. Isom, the, just south of it, those, for three block or for, you know, that next row, the ones just across the alley, south, are...
R2.
To, R2, as well as the, the block between, the next, the block as we go closer to Second Street. And then we have some northeast of it that would be quite a bit that's R2 also.
It's, to use your term from earlier, it's kind of a hodgepodge of R2 and R1 in that area. If you zoom out and look a little bit bigger, there's a lot of mixing, maybe R1 on the north side of the block and then you have the alley and R2 on the southern side or full blocks that are R2. Next block over is R1.
And there lies my dilemma, the hodgepodge. You know, if it's, it's R1 or it's R2, I, I, I personally don't think this is an area for R2. But again, as I expressed my concern, if the neighbors are okay with it, why should I be contradicting? And I say they're good with it because they did not voice a concern.
Yes, sir.
And, well, I can go on the rest of the night with this one. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chides, pages four, pardon me? I believe pages 414 and 415 give a little more detail, it looks like what they plan on doing to this, from addition. Like, there's actually quite a bit of detail over the next several pages behind that. I'm not sure it answers your question about, is it the right thing for the, the neighbors, but it certainly does let you know how they're gonna add on to it, what it would look like.
Is the intention to move another family member into that, or do you know?
I don't know.
No, no. Under the application, it says R2 for a duplex. So, clearly, it's going to be a, a two-person...
Yeah, there will be two dwelling units.
It sort of implies, if you look on 415, that the addition will be a, the new unit and the existing unit will be an efficiency that will be on the, I guess would be the east side there, if you look at the little, if you look at the, the schematic. How about the parking situation?
Is that, is, is, because I know they, just that one parking spot that they've got, that one single driveway, so they would be parking out in the street?
No, part of the building permit review, they would be required to meet the parking requirements for duplex. So, if they need to add additional parking on their site, they would have to meet those requirements.
There goes the yard.
Yep.
You know, we've said this before, if someone is really interested, it's a good idea to show up.
If Mr. De La Cruz were here, he might be able to shed some light on all of this.
Would a motion to postpone be appropriate at this time? I would move to postpone so we can get somebody who knows something other than planning staff, who's not, who doesn't have to know everything.
The motion would be not completely out of character with, first, it's appropriate. It's not out of character with the way we've handled these type of things in the past. Do you, would you postpone to a date certain, Ms. Joy?
To April 14th.
So, next meeting, so April 14th. Counsel, you, we've got a motion from Ms. Joy to postpone to date certain, April 14, 2020. Any, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Any discussion on that, that, the, can I have discussion on motion to postpone?
No.
Yeah. Is there any discussion on the most, motion to postpone? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to postpone item 8.9 and to our meeting on April 14th? Please say aye.
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 Opposed by that same side? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, Mr. Isom, thank you very much. Let's go to item 8.11. 8.11's on page 434. This is a second reading, Counsel. You recall this. This is zone case 2020-0043, excuse me, that's ordinance number, zone case 3403. This is for the Travel Trailer Park in north Lubbock, just east, just east of, excuse me, just west of the interstate and, and north of, oh, the Loves out there. What's that, 12, was, that's not 1294. What's that, what's the road that cuts across there?
2641.
2641. Mr. Isom, let's get a motion on this, Counsel. It's a second read, let's get a motion to consider and then we'll ask for staff to brief us.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for that second. Mr. Isom?
So, item, this item is a request from SKG Engineering to get a specific use permit for a travel trailer park in Mobile Home Park. Nine notifications were sent. One was received in favor and none in opposition. As we mentioned at the previous hearing, the one in favor owned multiple lots surrounding the subject site. That's why this map has so much green on it. So, currently, there are five mobile homes on site. At the last meeting, we got the ordinance, there was approval of first reading to limit the travel tra, to only new construction of Travel Trailer Park on this. Currently, it is zone R1 and it is identified as low-density residential. Here we have a few subject site photos, including on the bottom left, the existing mobile homes on site. And again, here is the site plan that they've submitted to staff for review. Now, while the area calls for low-density residential, the project is in compliance with some of the goals of the comprehensive plan as this can provide an additional buffer from the commercial development along I-27 to the single-family developments to the west. Staff did feel that it had public access and adequate utilities and that the development is consisting, consistent with existing development adjacent to it. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Isom? Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any discussion, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that, I've slept since then, but we were able to, we have everything in place that's in accordance with what that applicant was requesting, if I'm not mistaken.
The Counsel amended the ordinance and the one that you have before you is as amended.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good, good point. I should have mentioned that. It's a good point of, of clarification there. Other comments on 8.11? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the second reading of item 8.11. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by the same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, let's go to item 8.12. It's on page 449. It's a, also an item from planning. Mr. Isom remains quite popular this evening.
I don't know if I'd say popular.
We're gonna go, we're going, we're going with popular, Mr. Isom. We're going, we're going, we're going with popular, Mr. Eisen. Okay. Please, please brief us on this, if you would.
I can. So what I'm passing around is for the next item. I just wanted to give it time to get to everybody. But item eight twelve is a request to vary the three hundred-foot minimum distance requirements from the city of Lubbock for El Phoenix Taqueria. The proposed establishment is located on a lot that is directly adjacent to a lot with a daycare facility. So the development that it's going into is where the old one-on-one club was, or I believe the oyster bar was there. And on the next lot, at the very end of the lot, on the very south side, is a daycare facility. And they were within the three hundred-foot buffer, so that's why they are here with this variance request. And he, the applicant, is here to speak on these two items.
Okay. Before we begin consideration or go with any further questions, is there a motion to approve item eight twelve?
Mr. Mayor, taking eight twelve and eight thirteen involve the same ownership. And at the last council, regular council meeting, we had requested some information from Mr. Byrd, and I think it was just handed to us. I don't know if anybody's had time to look at it. On March the fifth of two thousand nineteen, there was a sale to an intoxicated person at Mesquite's Sports Grill and Bar. There was a sale served dispensed to a minor at the same location on August the sixth of two thousand nineteen. That's as far as I have, there is a, there are attached several other documents that obviously haven't had time to look at that indicate violations of TBAC.
TABC.
And attached to that are photographs of, actually, of eight point thirteen.
And that one, y'all had discussed some, some of the storefronts and their appearances. So I believe that was his intent, was to provide some photographs of their storefronts of those businesses.
Well, the, the other thing that concerned me on both cases, and I know we, right now we're on eight twelve, so let's just talk about eight twelve. That one is located next to a facility, what's the name of it, Harmony?
Neighborhood Academy.
Neighborhood Academy. And we have a question on our form. Will your business, this is line fifteen, will your business be located within three hundred feet of any private, public school, daycare, or childcare facility? It says no. Number sixteen says, will your business be located within a thousand feet of a private school? It says no. That's either a daycare or private school or something, is it not? I'm going to have problems with this one. I mean, it's not next door or across the street. It is right next to it.
So, Mr. Eisen, do we flag something like that when we see the application come in?
What, the application will come in, and what the planning staff will do, reach out to our GIS department to create these maps. So that's how they get stopped. If it's within any one of these buffers, we stop the application. They have to submit a request for the variance to planning staff, and we bring it before council.
There's also a warning on our application that says, "A person who makes a false statement or false representation in an application for a permit or license or in a statement report or other instrument to be filed with the commission or required to be sworn commits an offense punishable by imprisonment in the Texas Department of Criminal Justice for not less than two nor more than ten years." And it is signed by somebody, I can't read the writing on here. Do we rely on these applications?
As far as checking, I mean, we check every application that comes in. We don't just say, okay, they said there's nothing within three hundred feet. We check every application that comes in for TABC.
We rely on that information.
On the information that we create, yes.
Ms. Joy, I would point out on, on what's page four fifty-four for us, that on our document, they do indicate that there's zero feet from a child, from a childcare. Sit down the, sort of, two-thirds way down, the very far right.
And the measurement...
It's the TABC document that appears to me to be incorrectly filed. Is that, is that, is that what you see?
And those measurements are done lot line to lot line. That's why you get the zero feet.
Right. That makes sense. Thank you. I don't disagree, I don't, I'm not discounting your point that it seems to be like a misrepresentation. I just want to make sure that I drew this.
And I saw that, that it didn't matter to me, because the TABC is very important when they're making these applications to us.
Mayor.
Mr. Massengo?
The, or the, the space previously had another restaurant or something in it. Maybe it was, I can't remember what it was called. Was it the same applicant that had that prior to this application?
Not to my knowledge. From my knowledge, this is a new application for him at this location. But I do know that he's here tonight and can speak on these items.
Does anyone recall what the name of that was before this one?
In looking at some of the, the Google Earth images today, I want to say it might have been, there was a burrito king that was in there, too. I can't remember exactly which spot, but hopefully Mr. Byrd can update us on what restaurant was there prior to him.
Okay, counsel, we, I think it's appropriate to, I don't believe we have a motion on this. So if we're going to, I think if we're going to consider this any further, it's appropriate that we get a, get a motion. We could certainly ask the proponent to come up and, and talk to us if we'd like to do that. Is there, is there a motion to, to, from the floor?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Okay, is there further questions for Mr. Eisen right now? Or would you like to bring the, anybody want to bring the proponent up?
I have a quick question. I just want to make sure that the information that Mr. Eisen provided is information that is relative to the other properties of the applicant?
Yes, it's the same applicant for both cases, but what you have in front of you, it came from the request from the previous council meeting for the next item that's on the agenda.
But could be relevant for this?
But yes, it is the same applicant for both agenda items.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eisen. Counsel, what's your pleasure? You want, you want to bring the proponent up?
Uh, I think we should, yes.
Okay. Is Mr. Byrd?
All right, Mr. Griffith.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Thanks for coming up. My concern, Mr. Byrd, is the, on application, you've obviously been in the audience listening, is where on the TABC, pre-qualification packet, and city of Lubbock, both, it shows that, that the business is, will your business be located within three hundred feet of a daycare or childcare facility? And it's listed no.
Yes, sir. It was my understanding, and in, from our landlord, the Andersons, that they're saying we have a shared lot line, and, you know, actually, one zero zero seven slot road has its own parking lot, and which, from where we are to where the daycare is more than three hundred feet by that. And then I found out through their office that it is considered to be a shared lot line, and the distance is not quite that, within the three hundred feet.
Okay. It is within the three hundred?
Yes, by the, by the net that they provided, yes.
I don't have another question at the time.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
These properties are adjacent. Correct?
Well, we're on one corner and they're on the other corner. You know, there's, it's actually two different centers there, where we are. We're the one zero zero seven.
Right.
And there's only three, this strip mall, strip center, there's only three number, three legal addresses there. And then it goes down to the one zero one zero one. That's where the Fuzzies and the Hair Salon, and on the very end of their property, next to the Sonic down there, is where the daycare center is.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Patterson, Ms. Ms. Joyce, excuse me.
My concern is that as recently as August sixth of two thousand nineteen, there was a sale served dispensed to a minor.
Can I, this is Chase Dietrich.
Sure. You may, please. Move over to the microphone, please, sir.
My name is Chase Dietrich. I'm a counsel here in Lubbock, and I'm here to help Mr. Byrd with this.
Thank you.
The documents that you are seeing with the sell to an Intox and sell to a minor, those are what we call restrained. So in the legal world, it's the same as kind of a deferred. There's safe harbor acts under TABC rules and administrative law that if the business can show that, one, it wasn't the owner or an officer that served that, so in this case, it wasn't Mr. Byrd or a GM or a manager of some sort, and the person who did make that sale was TABC certified, then TABC does what's called a restraint. So they put it on like a ninety-day deferred, so to speak. And if nothing else happens, then that case, it obviously never goes away, but it was, it was handled by the corporation. And so the two charges that you do see there were both restrained, and there was no further punishment from it. The individuals that did sell to the Intox and the minor were both let go from the corporation. In addition, I'm not sure what documents you, you see there, but Mesquite's themselves is the only bar on that block that has outside security. They have hired outside security to help with the whole entire Broadway corner. And when I say outside security, I'm meaning just kind of security. They don't have guns and anything to that nature, but they wear security guards. So they're there for protection for the community. Mesquite's and Mr. Byrd also is the only one that allows TABC, they don't allow, they grant them permission to come sit at Mesquite's door and find minors themselves. So they sit there and they ID people themselves. And Mesquite's is the only bar on Broadway, so the Byrds are the only ones on Broadway that is allowing that. So that goes in regards to, I understand the concern of selling to an Intox. It was an isolated incident. There has been a minor also involved, but on, you're referring to Mesquite's, which is Broadway. It's my understanding right now, we're talking about El Phoenix. There has been no violations to El Phoenix. And there was another question about prior license. It was licensed to, I believe, a Raider Burrito. And then prior to that, it was a oyster bar, I think they called it Oyster Bar One-on-One. So there has been liquor license there in the past, but they were private licensed. So all that El Phoenix is trying to do is turn that into a, your basic MB, your mixed beverage license. They have changed their hours. It's a restaurant. It's not a bar. Yes, they do sell beer and alcohol, but it's a restaurant. They close at restaurant times, I think nine or ten o'clock at night. They're, on Sundays, they close at six o'clock. So it, it's not your typical bar that's open till two o'clock serving mixed drinks. It's really there for a, to go, kind of fast food Mexican joint is the, the whole purpose of that.
Do you work for J.R. Byrd, or do you work for the owner of the corporation?
I work for the owner of the corporation, ma'am.
Who is? Shane Byrd?
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Mr. Byrd or for Count Mr. Dietrich?
I do. I want to go by the other pieces of paper that are on here. On these where it says status, it just says that the case was closed, right? At this time, the case has been closed according to the date of this report being created. Okay. But the disposition over here to the left, and these go back all the way from two thousand two up to two thousand seventeen on the page that says chimneys. Okay? Is that, is that correct?
I don't have, can I get a coffee, copy, so I can follow with you? What you are looking at, it's my understanding that all these documents were given just to show the context that every bar on Broadway has had similar charges in the last three years. These were pulled back to two thousand seventeen.
Gotcha. Okay.
All that is, is just to show that it's not Mr. Byrd's bars are the only ones that are getting a violation. It is a, he's on par with all the other bars that, that are on Broadway.
He's on par?
He's on par. He's, he has the same...
Same problem, same problem.
He has the same problems that other bars have also.
Mr. Dietrich, maybe you can answer the question I asked two weeks ago. I'm sure you're prepared for this. You probably went back and watched the tape, but I'm interested what a shot bar is. I'm, you know, maybe, I've never, I'm not sure I've ever been to a shot bar. So I don't, I know we're not shooting somebody there, but can you explain that? Mr. Byrd had a hard time explaining that to me two weeks ago.
Yes, sir. So all that is, it's, it's a concept. It's the theme. Big Twelve Conference has ten teams. So they, Big Twelve Shots is the name. They have generated twelve Big Twelve Shots that are the shots to be themed. There, there's a Raider shot, there's a Longhorn shot, there's a Horn Frog shot, there's a Baylor shot, and name it all the way through. So there's twelve shots that is kind of the, it's the attraction. You're coming there for the Big Twelve Shots.
Mr. Weaver, what do you think about there being a Baylor shot? You know, I mean...
I find it somewhat ironic.
Just checking. I want to make sure, as a, as a proud alumnus, I want to make sure that you were on the record for that.
Just for the record, they're not called shots. They are called like the Raider, I don't, the Matador drink. There's...
The Bear Shot?
The Bear Shot, there you go, something to that nature.
So is it, is this a, like a, a drink that would be mixed with something, or is it just a shot of alcohol?
There are mixed drinks that are served in your, your top glasses. They also have small shot glasses that are your, you know, five ounces, that they could be drinking those also.
Okay.
They do also have beer and, you know, other various liquors, but it's very limited. It is, it is a very small bar. I believe fire marshals have already approved. I think it's either seventy-two or seventy-three people is the capacity, so it, it'll be one of the smaller bars on that, that street.
It's tiny.
Does that answer your question, Mayor?
It does. Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I also, I, I mentioned to Mr. Byrd my concern about the cleanup outside. I've seen some improvement on that. I want to thank you for that. I jogged by there the other morning and it, on it, right after, well, it would have been a busy night, and it seemed to be a little better. I'll be looking for consistency on that.
If approved.
If approved, yeah. Well, they have other, they have other right next door. So, Mr. Atkinson, I believe that we had asked that maybe that LPD be ready to talk about this , too. Are they ready to do that tonight?
Yes, Mayor, they are. I'd like to call Assistant Chief Neil Barron to the podium.
We may call you guys back here in just a sec.
Stay close to the...
Yeah, please, if you don't mind.
Good evening, Mayor.
Chief, how you doing?
Good. How are you all?
Good, good to see you.
Good.
Good. You got anything to add to this?
No, sir. Just, well, yes, sir. Just a little bit about Mesquite's. I pulled the numbers. Last time, we didn't have the, the numbers to really compare Mesquite's. We had thirty-six total calls for service there in two thousand eighteen and forty-eight in two thousand nineteen to that address. We had ten fight calls in two thousand eighteen and four in two thousand nineteen, which is a call that we frequently get to, to bars. Also, six disturbance calls in two thousand eighteen and eighteen disturbance calls in two thousand nineteen. Now, out of those calls, the fight calls, in two thousand eighteen, we only took two reports... Now, out of those calls, the fight calls in 2018, we only took two reports. In 2019, we took one report, meaning that most of those calls, something, some type of disturbance or fight was called in, but by the time the officers got there, the crowd had dispersed or whatever the problem was, was gone when the officers get there. So, they didn't make a report. Same way with the disturbance calls, there were two reports in 2018 and seven in 2019. We responded to an asundary of other calls there, a few, a small number of domestic disturbances, thefts, and checks subjects, and I can give you the exact numbers on those if you wish. And that's really what we found there and.
Any gun-related calls, sir?
I believe there was one in 2019. It came in as a disturbance, but I believe it was outside the club, it didn't start inside the club.
Was that a, was it a, can you provide any more detail for that?
No, I'd have to look up the case number to provide more details on that.
Mr. Barron, how would this compare to local, right across the street or Chimmy's just to the east of this? Do you have numbers for those?
I have numbers for Chimmy's in 2019.
That'd be good, that's a good, that's probably a good comparison.
So, 48 calls for service to Mesquite's in 2019 and 33 to Chimmy's in 2019.
Okay.
So.
Any other detail?
No, sir.
Okay.
I do have the, I think you've already reviewed the TABC report, but I brought that with me as well.
Have you had any color you would add to the TABC report?
No, I think it goes right in line with kind of what we've seen on our numbers, so.
Have you seen what was presented to the council?
No, ma'am, not, not unless.
It's hard to compare something if you don't have anything to compare it to, right?
I believe that most of these TABC numbers are the same ones that we pulled. Yes, ma'am.
Anything else for Chief Barron? Mr. Griffin? Chief, just a clarification. You indicated Chimmy's call number and a Mesquite's call number.
Yes, that's total calls for service. Yes, in 2019, there were 48 total calls for service to Mesquite's at 2421 Broadway, and during the same year, same 12 months, there were 33 calls for service to Chimmy's.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any numbers for Raider Burrito in it right there too? I mean, it's a little different, do you have anything, call numbers for that? What's that? Raider Bar, excuse me.
Raider Bar, in that time period, there are only 12 calls and they were all alarms to that.
Okay, good.
I don't believe they were open during that period of time, you may have to ask.
Okay. All right, other questions for Chief Barron? Thank you, Chief, appreciate your input. Okay. So, Council, we've got, we've been talking about the item that would be 812. 13 is where the data was, the motion we have on the floor is for 812. So, I think it's probably appropriate before we move to 813 that we go back and consider the motion that's on the floor. That's for the, for El Phoenix, Takia, we've got a motion, we've got a motion to approve that. Is there further discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Confirm that we're talking about El Phoenix, Takia.
Takia.
Yeah, that, yeah. It's actually, we're talking about a restaurant.
Yes, ma'am, it is a restaurant, but this is for the liquor application license, so there will be beer and liquor there, but it is a restaurant that serves breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
And it will be more than beer and wine?
I'm sorry, what's that?
It will be more than beer and wine?
And mixed beverage.
Full bar?
There'll be a full bar, yes, ma'am.
Does Fuzzy's serve alcoholic beverages or beer and wine?
Yes, so I've heard.
Fuzzy's is a full bar also.
Okay.
So, you've heard, Mr. Patterson-Gill?
That's what I've been told.
Second. I don't believe that's a motion, but thank you for agreeing.
Sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I wish there was better pictures of this for the restaurant on Slide Road because if I, if memory serves, there's a little bit more separation between those, between this restaurant that's always been a restaurant as long as it's been in existence. So, they're not butted up against each other, there's an easement or some sort, and they don't share a common wall there. So, they've always, and there's probably a reason you haven't had any opposition from the academy, because it's always been a restaurant, not unlike what they're requesting for this.
That's a good point, Mr. Christian.
I'd just make one point, I wish your landlord would fix the potholes in the parking lot.
We will pass that message to the landlord.
You know what I'm talking about.
Okay, further discussion, Council. Got a motion on the floor to approve item 812. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. All right, let's go now to item 813, it's on 461. Is there a motion to begin discussion? Is there a motion on item 813 on page 461? Okay, the approval on item 813 for Big 12 Shots fails for lack of a motion. We'll move now to item 814. Council, 814 has been removed from tonight's agenda by staff. So, we'll move now to item 815 on page 531. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kostelich is going to come up, talk to us about 815, 16, and 17. So, Blue, if you would, please.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Kostelich. Council, I might mention that there is a, the presentation that Mr. Kostelich is going to do was emailed to us late this afternoon, if you want to open it up in your, on your, in your iPad or you've got a hard copy, whichever you prefer. Mr. Kostelich.
All right, thank you, sir. Normally, I would be introducing our guest, Mr. Matt Bowles and Mr. Jerry Kyle, but obviously for reasons COVID-19, they are not traveling, but they are watching on, as you call it, Mayor Musseve TV, so if you want to wave to them, they're watching right now, so. Mayor, Council, if you'll recall, during the budget process, every year we bring forward some capital projects and we recommend funding sources. Some of those funding sources, although we've tried to do as much cash funding as possible, some of those are recommended to be debt financed because they are long asset life projects that are very capital intensive. So, tonight you have before you one resolution and two parameters ordinances. And what I want to do is first explain what these actions tonight allow us to do as a staff and what they, and very importantly, what they do not allow us to do. So, 815 is a resolution which allows city staff to publish the legally required notices that we are contemplating a debt issuances. This does not authorize us to actually issue the debt. That is an action that the council must take later. So, that, tonight, 815 is a resolution just allowing us to publish the notice. 816 and 817 are what we traditionally call parameters ordinances. This allows the city, with the advice and counsel of our financial advisors and bond council, to refund previously issued debt, so it's not new money coming on, we're essentially refinancing for a lower interest rate, given that we meet certain parameters that will be set in this, in these two ordinances. So, if we want to move first, Council, to the market update, which starts on page three. Mr. Bowles and Ms. Julia McMillan provided a great market overview, and there's a lot happening in the market right now. It's a very fluid and very volatile market. So, what you're seeing today is as of last night, the close of the market last night. If you're watching the news today, the market has already shifted from what we're presenting in this, so that's the environment that we're living in right now. But I do want to pull out a couple of highlights to call to your attention. Right now, what you're seeing in the market is a response to COVID-19, to the pandemic that is going on in our nation, and a lot of what the investors feel in confidence that they have in the responses to what's happening. So, what we first got from the investors was really a flight to quality, and this is what you're going to see in any, what you call a market correction. Investors are not, they're a little sketchy, they're a little, what we call frothy. So, they're going to pull their money out of higher risk investments, mainly what you would say equities, and they're going to put that money into a little bit lower risk, like your treasuries and your bonds, municipal bonds being one of those. That's a typical flight to quality. However, as the response became a little bit more dire and there was even more uncertainty, you elevated from that flight to quality to an absolute liquidity crisis, where your investors are no longer just putting their money and shifting their money between buckets. They're at this point pulling that money out of the market as a whole in order to hold cash. That's what we're seeing in the market going on right now, is a complete sell-off, almost a fire sale of whatever they have that's liquid in order to raise cash and hold cash for the time being. So, as of Friday's close, the Dow Jones had declined about 33% for the year. That's a massive decline. The S&amp;P and NASDAQ were 29% down and 23% down respectively. So, on Monday, the Fed announced what they're really terming what we call unlimited quantitative easing. They're throwing everything. So, if you think back to the 2008 crisis and the market crash of 2008, I like what one economist, how one economist put it, if the Fed at that point kind of did a targeted missile attack on the economy, what they just did on Monday was absolute nuclear option. They put everything they had out there on Monday. It got some good attraction from investors, but the dispute in Congress, between the House and the Senate, kind of offset that. Today, as Congress is getting a little bit closer to an actual deal, investors were extremely favorable, and from what we saw today, the market's back up around 11%. So, a good rebound on that, there's a lot of confidence. All that to say, the $2 trillion package that Congress is putting together is being received pretty favorably. We should see something coming quickly. The market is looking like it's going to start at least leveling off and start normalizing. So, we're going to be watching that very closely over the next few weeks, next month, to see what's coming of this. But as you'll see from the chart on the top right, really what RBC's economic outlook is looking like and what I've seen from a lot of other banks, is really this hit is going to be a Q2 hit. Q3, you're going to start getting some leveling off and some real rebound in the economy. Q4, we'll be back up to about normal levels. So, this is, what we're projecting is a big hit at first, but the economy should recover very nicely throughout this. If we want to turn to page four, this is the current market update for the taxable, what you would call the taxable side, which namely is the US Treasuries. And what we've seen over this past year, if you look at the top left, from the short end of the curve on the Treasuries to the long end, you've seen a drop of about anywhere from 150 to 200 basis points. That's part of that sell-off, but also the quantitative easing that's coming in. Spreads have tightened, but if you look at the chart at the bottom, where we are today on the Treasury's curve is at or below the 20-year lows. So, the Treasuries are at really what we're going to call all-time lows. If you shift over to the tax-exempt market, and that's where we issue our new debt, is in the tax-exempt market, so we're really talking about municipal markets, this is not what you've seen. The fall in the taxable market is vastly different than what you see on the tax-exempt side. There's a lot of decoupling that has happened between the taxable and the tax-exempt. Again, that's part of this liquidation crisis. What they, what the investors were doing was selling off anything liquid that they had in their portfolios, municipals were very easy to sell off, that's what they got rid of. So, not always what you should get rid of, it's just what's easiest to get rid of in order to raise cash at that time. So, the chart at the bottom looks vastly different on the tax-exempt side than what you saw on the taxable. So, if you're looking at the ranges from 0 to 30 years, where we are today is about, I'd say just below the midpoint on the 20-year averages, or on the 20-year ranges. So, again, something to look at. Another way to highlight this, if you're looking at the 2, 5, 10, and 30-year charts on page six, you're going to see the darker blue line is the Treasuries. The light blue line is the MMD, the municipal markets, and you'll see that, that stark jump. That really is a factor again of the liquidation that you'll see on page seven. So, for 60 straight weeks, municipal bonds were really thought highly of in the market. So, for 60 straight weeks, we had inflows, net inflows, investors really wanting to buy. Over the last three weeks, we've seen that stark sell-off. Again, we do expect that to reverse and to normalize by the time that we're issuing these bonds, but this is the data that we have to go off of today, so this is what we are showing you. So, if you look at page nine.
So, Mr. Kostelich, before we go, before we leave the, sort of the current market update, your thesis is that the muni rates have gone up largely because of people selling for liquidity?
Yes, sir.
Not because of the credit, the underlying credit that people, I mean.
No, the underlying credit is still there, municipals are still high-quality, especially in the investor grades, especially where we are at the double eight plus. It's still a very high quality. These companies are just needing the liquid cash on hand during this crisis.
Thank you, I think that's a pretty important point, thank you.
All right, no further questions, we'll move to our 2020 New Money Issuance. Again, these are the projects that were identified through the budget process, and when we did that, you know, what we do annually, after we approve the budget, in the first meeting in October, we typically issue what's called a reimbursement resolution on these projects to say any cash that we are expending of our own through the potential upcoming bond issuance will reimburse ourselves for that cash that we've already spent. So, that's a reimbursement resolution. Now, this is the first step in the actual bond issuance that'll allow us to reimburse ourselves for anything that we've already spent on these projects. For the certificate side, remember, we do have two different credits here, the certificate side and the water, wastewater revenue debt. On the certificate obligation, we have about $8.1 million of projects. That's going to be the Upland 66 to 82nd, valued at about $3.6 million project. And the second project on here was the wrong description pulled, it's the same amount, $4.5 million, but that should be the Indiana Avenue, 130th to 146th. So, we're going to get that corrected and make sure that that's updated on the next presentation.
Say that again.
That's, instead of 98th, it's Indiana Avenue, 130th to 146th Street. That's, instead of 98th, it's Indiana Avenue, 130th to 146th Street. On the water wastewater credit, we have the Lowhead Sea project, the elevated storage tanks, the water treatment plan improvements, Phase III, and the Northwest Treatment Plant, 8 million gallon ground storage tank. All in, those projects are 58, just shy of $58.7 million on the revenue credit. Now, we do have Lowhead Sea broken into two buckets right now. First, the pump station. We're in the process of applying for a TWDB Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan. That, if you'll recall, the TWDB gives really subsidized interest rates. So there is potential savings. Instead of doing a public offering, doing the TWDB loan, right now, we're estimating over that 20-year life, somewhere around a $1.3 million savings in essentially interest rates. So that's what we're going for first. Since it's not fully approved, we're including that in this notice just in case. But the state revolving fund only applies to the pump station itself. So therefore, the public offering has to do, the remainder of that project, which is all the supply lines.
Before you move on, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Please, please.
I assume we've spent some city funds already on these projects. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure if we have or not on that.
Mr. Keenum, he's not in the audience. I believe we have started some preliminary engineering work and right-of-way work on Upland, and we might have spent design work, portions of the design work on Indiana. We can have that information back to the council before.
And I assume since we're redoing those overhead storage tanks, that we've spent some funds, city funds?
We have obligated in our spending funds primarily on demolition right now. Engineering on the elevated tank projects will spread across multiple years. That money has been spent. And we're actually in the bid process for the stand-up of the new tanks.
And I guess my question is, obviously, we knew it was going, how much it was going to cost to do these projects. And that's built into our budget?
Yes, ma'am.
And I assume that those repayments or those reimbursements are built into the budget as well?
They are, and they are included in the rate models as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So if you look at page 10, on the new money issuance plans, I want to point out that we are doing a maximum maturity of 20 years on these, both certificates and water wastewater. And we're doing our normal level debt service in this. The numbers that you're going to see, the preliminary results that you're going to see on the next few pages, are assuming that we keep the same credit ratings, AA+ on the certificate side, on the city side, and then a AA- on the water and wastewater revenue side. Those rates that we're going to include on the interest side are as of March 23rd, plus 35 basis points. So they're going to be much higher than what we really believe that we're going to see by the time that we actually issue these bonds. Also, the last bullet point, current timetable on these projects, projects approval of the ordinance authorizing the actual issuance. So again, this is the notice that goes out to the public to say we're contemplating doing this. The actual authorization from the council to issue won't come back to you until May 12th, after that notice period runs up. So on the certificate side, page 11, the total sources of funds come out to about $8.3 million at an all-in interest cost. In about the middle of the page, you'll see the all-in true interest cost of 4.36%. Again, that's much higher than we've seen over the last several years. And I don't want that to be a sticker shock. At those rates, we would hold off, and that's why we are doing a negotiated sell on this, to give ourselves the flexibility to not set a date and snap the line and say we have to. Because on a competitive sell, if you set a date for your sell, you're locked into that. In this type of rate environment, in this type of market, that's not what we want to do. We want to give ourselves flexibility to be able to stop, shift, and whatever we need. If you turn to page 12, what we're expecting on the water wastewater side is about the same, all-in true interest cost of about 4.35%. Page 13 has the estimated timetable right now. Again, here we are in front of you for this council meeting on March 24th. We're looking at our credit rating agency meetings on April 15th, coming back to you for the actual authorization to go forward with a sell, a parameters ordinance on that on May 12th, and looking at pricing right now, May 14th. So we still have quite a bit of time before we actually price these bonds. And again, with a negotiated sell, we do have flexibility. If the market is not right, not favorable at that point, we have an option to shift that out, to make sure that we're not locking ourselves into a tumultuous time. Before I move to the taxable advance refundings opportunities, I'll stop and take any questions that you have.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think you did a really nice job overviewing it. Mr. Atkinson, I know you and I've had a chance to talk a little bit about this, but I'd like your, more from an operational standpoint, you know, let's say the market doesn't recover. I know you've done some, you guys have done some contingency planning on this, and I'm interested in your thoughts on that.
Certainly, Mayor. We continue daily. Now, today was a different day with what you saw in the markets. We do not anticipate that what we saw in the broader market today is a local benefit, not at this point. We're not there yet. As it relates to these projects, I do suggest that we move forward and get us at least to the pricing point. We can stop and pull back on any of those. So really, one of the things we evaluate as we look towards what's going to happen here economically, is what do we have to do and what do we have to take care of? As it relates to those two road projects, and probably most specifically to the Indiana project, we need to get those done. If we cannot hit our financial targets, we will not ask you to do the sale, and we will push the project for a year. But recall that that one most definitely will be impacted by the state's intent to begin construction on Loop 88 with a letting date of this August. So if it comes completely past where it fits within our existing models of what we can afford, we're not going to ask you to do it. We will push them. But really think our local impact, at the moment, we're absolutely holding on to capital projects, but our local economic impact is going to be in the operating section. That's where we're going to have the biggest challenges coming forward into the next year.
Thank you. Wanted to make sure we had a chance to have that discussion.
Thank you.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Please continue, Mr. Kostic.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So item 816 and 817 are what we traditionally call parameters ordinances for a taxable advance refunding. As you recall, advance refundings, traditional advance refundings, were taken away from us in 2017, 2018. We still have the opportunity to do taxable advance refunding, so taking your tax-exempt bonds and refunding those as taxable bonds. As you saw earlier in the presentation, the taxable market has declined so much that that's what has made this opportunity available to us typically, in all sense and reality. It should never make sense to do this. But with the way that the market has flipped with taxable and tax-exempt, it does make it attractive at this point to do that. You can actually recognize savings by doing a taxable advance refunding. The most recent example that we have here in the city is back last fall when we did this. We went forward with a taxable advance refunding because the market made sense to do so, and we were able to recognize over 10% present value savings on both the certificate side and the water wastewater side. That's important, too, because of our efforts to transition a lot of our fee-supported debt that is on our tax, you know, our city credit. We're trying to get that off and move that over to the water wastewater revenue credit. These taxable advance refundings allow us to do two things. First of all, recognize savings so that we're paying less in debt service in our water wastewater system. And two, get that debt that is carried on the city's credit back over to the water wastewater, so the water wastewater system is fully supporting that debt. Now, it's always been internally where we have split it out. But if you look at us compared to the city of Lubbock, compared to other cities in the state of Texas, you'll see that our tax-backed debt per capita is much higher than other cities, and that's because of the way that we've structured all of our debt in the past. It's not necessarily wrong to do that. Typically, when you do a revenue debt, you do pay a little bit more of a premium on the interest rate. So a little bit, a little bit higher interest rate. Other cities have not done that. So their tax-backed debt looks much lower per capita than the city of Lubbock. But they do have that. They do have the enterprise debt just carried under a different revenue credit. So what we're looking at, if you look at page 16, 17, and 18, highlighted are some of the candidates that we see today that make sense. These are all within previously issued bonds, but these are the series that make sense and they meet the criteria today to be refunded as taxable advance. This list right here, what's highlighted, may not be what is highlighted in a month and a half, two months, whenever we actually execute this. If you look at page 19, this is what we have to go off of. These are our parameters that we're asking for approval on this, so that with the advice and the constant monitoring by our financial advisors and our bond counsel, what we would go forward with. We would do on the geo-refunding, a total amount that's potentially available of $57.59 million, and on the water wastewater side, $66.46 million. That's all in. That's if we were to refund everything on that list. That's probably not likely, because every series has to meet the requirements to have a 5% savings, not less than 60% arbitrage. So a true interest cost of 4.5% maximum. At the same time, in this parameters ordinance, we cannot extend the maturity. So if a series was supposed to mature in 2029, in the refunding, it still has to mature in 2029. So those are the parameters that we're asking you to approve for us to meet in order to move forward on this. Again, that will be with the advice and the counsel of our FAs will keep Mr. Atkinson in the loop at all times like we normally do on these refundings.
What's the timeframe that we're giving you on that, on this parameter? Or is it specific to that?
I don't think it's specific.
Certainly, it's got to come back to us for approval. I'm just curious if it's, but there's not a period of time.
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
And so if we were able to refund all the water bonds, the 66 million, that would come off of the city's debt and go over to that fund?
It would officially move over to that credit, yes.
On the geo-refunding, is that the same or different? Because I don't remember what that's for.
On the geo-refunding, it's taking all of those previous series and lumping them all together into one new 2020 series? But it's taking it off all those, it's very confusing. I'm sorry, I'm trying to walk through this, make it, it's taking those certain ones and basically putting it into a new series at a lower interest rate.
But it would still be on the city's?
It's still on the city's credit, yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Okay. Thanks.
Good job. Nice explanation. Further questions for Mr. Kostic? Mr. Weaver, do you think we should consider these individually? Would you suggest that?
I would recommend that you do, yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Kostic, don't go far. Let's counsel, let's go to, let's go to item 815. It's on page...
531.
531. I'll open the floor for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Masagel. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Okay. Is there further discussion on this one, counsel? Mr. Kostic, you have anything to add on this, right?
No, sir.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve item 815, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Let's move now to item 816. It's on page 539. I'll open the floor for a motion on it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Griffith, thank you, Ms. Joy. Are there questions for staff or comments on item 816? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Let's go to item 817. I'll open the floor for a motion. It's on page 599.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Open the floor for questions for staff or comments. I'd like to make just a quick comment. I think it's important to note that while the bulk of our city operation, and to some degree, the finance group has been involved in our response to the coronavirus and the implications that has on our community, Mr. Kostic's team is going about their business, as are many of our people, the people that are taking, make sure trash gets emptied, and those that make sure the water is on when we turn the faucet, and those that make sure the electricity comes on when we flip the switch. We're in full budget mode in Blue Shop, although we're doing a bunch of, we're doing a lot of different modeling than we were three weeks ago, and we'll have some discussions about that, and we would hope maybe to get to it today. And we spent a lot, we didn't quite get there on our, we were posted to talk about that in work session we could have, and we just took the time on the order, which is fine. That's the most important business. But I just, I'm thankful for the efforts of your team, that you continued chopping wood and doing the things that we will get to soon, and we're thankful for that.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, Mr. Kostic. Very good job. You made it understandable.
That's good.
Thank you.
Any further comments on 817, the motion on 817? There's a motion on the floor to prove item 817. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? The motion carries seven to zero. Okay, counsel, we'll move now to item 818. Item 818 is one of the two emergency supplement, emergency items that Mr. Weaver commented on earlier. I'm going to read item 818. Item 818 is a resolution from the city council. It's to consider a resolution continuing and affirming the mayor's declarations of disaster, disaster, excuse me, regarding the COVID-19 or coronavirus epidemic to include a declaration regarding public and private gatherings. To begin discussion, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Masagel. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Atkinson, just a bit, if you would, on this, just a reminder, at a summary level, we talked about this at length in work session, but if you would, those that might, are watching at home that might not have seen work session, if you would start, and certainly if you need to engage counsel, please do so. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll begin to work my way through this. Counsel, each of you has two items at your table. You have the actual fifth declaration. This is what we referenced during the work session, which legal presented to us during our closed session. I'll go over in summary, just kind of really quickly through that. As I begin that note, that counsel, as you consider this item, Lubbock itself is up to 14... As I begin, that note that counsel, as you consider this item, Lubbock itself is up to 14 confirmed cases. And today, we've seen a much wider reporting effort throughout the region. So first, this item is not a shelter-in-place, nor is it a stay-home order. Note that we are specifically calling upon our residents, our employers, our employees. It's up to each of us to protect ourselves, to protect the public at large, our employees, and our employers. We are encouraging remote and work from home, as well as social distancing. Essential services in Lubbock remain open, and they must enforce social distancing to the fullest extent possible. Just a very quick list of those: grocery stores, convenience stores, package stores, daycares, healthcare providers and their facilities, transportation-related items, vehicle fueling, parts, repair, maintenance. Our homeless shelters and our providers of essential services therein, they're open. Certainly, government services and facilities, banks, financial, professional services, office buildings. And let us note that that is not more than 10 in a single enclosed space. That specific language is included. Manufacturing, distributing, logistics, residential, commercial, and industrial construction, that is, the jobs, the job sites. It includes the related supply chain operations with very specific stated occupancy limits. Those limits are not more than 100 persons, or one-half of the posted occupancy of the building, whichever is less. Launder mats, dry cleaners, call centers. There is no change to restaurants, bars, food courts. They remain closed to customers. But the use of drive-through, pickup, delivery, those types of items are allowed. Personal service businesses that deal with direct person-to-person services. If they're not time-sensitive or immediate health or safety, they're closed. Including items such as hair and nail salons, barber shops, stylist tattoo, piercing business, tanning salons, waxing. Most importantly, within those two broad categories there, one that's essential, open, one that is not and is closed. Retail other than those are closed to customers. The use of drive-through, pickup, delivery, curbside, that is allowed and that is encouraged. We had, I think, a very good discussion as it related not to auto service and maintenance, but to auto sales. Online retail and related methods of providing those products are allowed. They're encouraged. What's not open would be your typical showroom-style environment. Mayor, counsel, this declaration is set to run through April the 3rd at 11:59 PM. With that, I'd be pleased to take any questions you may have or to speak to any points directly. If I, just one final comment, there is an existing guidance document. That document and the declaration before you are largely consistent. There are a couple of small tweaks that will be made to that.
This being the guidance document?
Yes, sir. The one that was distributed earlier today. Document is posted on the city's website. It was provided to the media. There will be a couple of small adjustments, really, as we fixed bringing everything in line. The document will republish tomorrow, and it will republish with tomorrow's date, so that there is no question as to what has that.
And it won't be, it's not a material change. It would just be clarifying. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are no substantive changes. We're just fixing the spirit and making it match. With that, take any questions counsel may have. And I apologize, I've interrupted myself twice now. So PSS, PPS. Mayor, counsel, on item 15, item 15, Romanet number two. This is the subparagraf on nonessential retail establishments. I would ask for one change there. Retail businesses which do not primarily sell or provide products or services described in number four below, that should read number 16 below, please strike four and insert 16.
Okay. Ms. Joy, would you amend your motion to?
Yes.
And Mr. Griffith, you okay with that? Did you, who was the second? Who was the second? Mr. Mastigal?
Was that the second?
Who was the second on that?
You were the first.
You had the motion, I'm sorry. You had the motion. Were you, I'm sorry, wrong direction.
That's all right. I couldn't remember either. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion to reflect the city manager's change in the fifth declaration.
Ms. Joy, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Open the floor for discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, because we've had a lot of calls about lots of things, but specifically under essential services, number 16, under Roman numeral six. We did, we said including attorneys, accountants, engineers, title companies, insurance agents, and other licensed professionals. We had a lot of calls on that area, and we did, basically, it's not substantive. It's just including some detail because of the many calls that we had.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other comments, questions? I know we had a lot of discussion. We had an hour in this in work session. Had a chance to have a few more, a little bit more discussion in executive session about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
I just, I just can't let it go by without saying that how difficult this has been to ensure that the decisions that get made provide some safety measures for the citizens. And I appreciate the fact that, I mean, just statement that was made during today to say that even though businesses or what have you are not necessarily included in some of the closures, they still have the option to put themselves under some of those closures. I know that there are some additional concerns that have been voiced throughout the community and wanted to say that that is always the option for so many of the businesses that are there that still have concerns themselves.
Thank you. Ms. Patterson-Harris. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve number 818. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. We have one more item. The second emergency item is item 819. I'd like to read that, please. It's an ordinance, emergency ordinance to the city council. Considered ordinance postponing the city of Lubbock, Texas, May 2, 2020, general election to the November 3, 2020, uniform election date, and providing for passage on first reading as an emergency. In order to begin discussion, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Mastigal. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. The ordinance before you obviously is in regards to the election originally ordered to be held on May the 2nd, 2020. Part of the guidance issued by Governor Abbott recently is an option, and would note that he has posted it as an option. It's been strongly recommended that any of those governmental entities who were scheduled to hold an election on May the 2nd, 2020, postpone such to November 3, 2020. Question has been asked, why? Why from May to November? November was selected by the governor because there are only two uniform election days available to you, the city council of Lubbock, in the state, that being May, that being November. There's not an intermediate date. We do know that there is discussion to consider one, and certainly your staff, with your instruction, will seek to see if we can find an intermediate date. But today, your only two options are to hold on May 2 or on November 3. May 2 presents numerous challenges, presents numerous challenges. With what we're seeing around the state with various shelter-in-place, stay-home orders, what we are seeing in other areas with an inability to properly staff the polls, to find sufficient election workers to ensure that all those who choose to take part in the election are able to do so. It's become a huge challenge. You have several local area entities that have exercised this option. And we expect, certainly based on what this council might do, that you will see the remaining ones also take that option. Where we stand today, we have had three of our local cities, three of our cities in Lubbock County, that have affirmatively moved to go to the November 3 date. It's before the Lubbock City Council today in a less-than-formal poll. We do understand that many of our independent school districts will be taking up this same matter most this week, if not as soon as they can get to it, which would be early in April. After reviewing what's going on around us, certainly after considering the seriousness of the actions that this council has taken to ensure the protection of the public, I believe it was also announced yesterday that the United States Census Bureau has delayed their deadlines. I think the potential of trying to make these things happen and happen so soon in such an unknown period of time does not seem to be advisable. So with that, your staff would answer any questions and would further recommend that you consider this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Is there comments or questions on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Joy.
I just wanted, Ms. Patterson-Harris and I are not excited about this at all, having to move it. However, when you realize that you will not have locations for people to early vote or to vote, or you may not have persons who are willing to serve as in the election process when we come to vote, which is substantial, we really don't have a choice. You know, my preference would be a sooner date than November, but only the governor can dictate if we can do that or not. And I, we have suggested that perhaps we pursue that option. I have had some emails about people concerned about having elections when we say we're going to have them. But this is not a matter at this time of something that we can say, no, we're going to do ours. Nobody else is, of course. And we're going to have to just watch this as it develops. But my preference would have been, as I believe I can represent Ms. Patterson-Harris's, is that we have those. But we've got to use some logic, some understanding, and some reason, given where we are today.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. That's very well said. You go add to that, SPH?
I will call for the question.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Question's been called. All those in favor of the motion to approve item 819, please say aye.
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 Opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, I think, Ms. Garza, does that take care of, from your perspective, does that take care of our business?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, sir.
A couple of things as we close. First of all, we have a three-week gap between council meetings. That happens several times a year. And our next meeting's on April 14th. It's, as we look forward today, we feel like we probably will hold that meeting in a virtual kind of format. We're working very hard to make sure that that's done in the right way. Most importantly, providing access to citizens and being done in a way that's open and easy to, not only to participate, but to get to. And so please stay tuned for information around that. I'm thankful for the people in this room and the leaders in this room and the men and women they represent and for what they continue to do for our community. There's too much for me to talk about specifically, but I think it's important. I know I speak on behalf of our council when I say thank you for that. Finally, as a community, we continue to sail on uncharted waters. We've taken very difficult precautions and we've made very difficult decisions. And they impact all of us. Certainly, some more than others. There's people on this very dais that are impacted by the action that we just took. And their businesses, you know, we, there's a lot of talk about what's essential and what's not essential. And I think in the, and somebody said it earlier today, and I'm going to steal it. But I think in the simplest form, everyone's business is essential. And I think that's the way we look at it. It's certainly how I look at it. But we've made decisions that we feel like guard the safety, best provide for the safety of our citizens. And that's what we're charged with doing. And we will continue to monitor that. We believe that if we can slow the spread of this virus, flatten the curve, as the medical professionals say, and do it as quickly as possible, we will prepare ourself to begin to recover. We were strong going in to this. There'll be a time in the future where we'll be strong again. Our diverse economy, bolstered by a lot of great small businesses, with entrepreneurial men and women that have that independent West Texas spirit, will not only survive, but we will thrive. We continue to ask for your support, your good ideas, and your prayers. It's 7:26. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. We're adjourned.